I do have the PowerPoint. I don't think I do have a PowerPoint. Unless Bob can try to quickly get it off of the Sunless Drive somewhere. We get to it.
No, no, it's alright.
I've been playing with it for quite some time today, so if that's the case.
Did you win the Masters, Bob?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Yountville Town Council. It is Tuesday, March 17th. Happy St. Patty's Day to everyone. We are being broadcast live on Channel 28, so hopefully we'll get through this rather quickly, and you can all go out and hoist a pint. For those of you joining us for the very first time in council chambers this evening, you'll find the agenda and the supporting documentation on the wall in the little plastic bins behind the fire department. Next to the door where you walked in. And as I stated, we are being broadcast live on Channel 28. You'll be able to review this session on Friday at noon, same channel. And for those of you joining us tonight in council chambers, I would appreciate it if you could turn off your cellphones and pagers, just so long as you're in the council chambers and you're free to go outside and take care of your stuff like that. Okay. Town Clerk, may we have the roll, please?
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Chilton.
Here.
Councilmember Muller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunbar.
Here.
Mayor Saucerman.
Here.
Would the Planning Director, Bob Tierney, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thanks, Bob. Item four, closed session. I don't believe we have any reports from closed session. We had none recently, so. Item five, adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to the agenda tonight?
Yes, so you need to pull item C due to the Ad-Hoc Committee's recommendation coming after this agenda was published, so that the Ad-Hoc Committee can present the discussions they had with regard to the agreement.
Item seven, C, off of consent. Any other changes or corrections to the agenda this evening? Alrighty, we'll pull that item. Item, or with that said, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None that motion carries? Thank you. Item six is public comment on any matter that's not listed on tonight's agenda. Anyone? Yes, ma'am?
Mayor, you and I have met, although usually I'm handing you drink tickets and you're handing me a glass of wine.
Yay.
So this is a little...
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Carol Vendrello, and we're here, I'm here for two reasons. First is to bring you up to date on certain matters that we are concerned about regarding the parcel of land that's just east of Yountville and south of Fennel. And then the second part of my comments are to ask for your help and support in this. You know that this piece of property borders on many communities, many parts of our communities here in Yountville, and I know that I don't have to tell you how beautiful it is, but we have some concerns. First, the Certificate of Compliance that was used to begin this process dates back from 1926, and a lot has happened since then. And if the certificate, once the Certificate of Compliance has been issued, then the lot, and the lot line adjustments go through, that means that there will be, there can be six new houses out there, and according to the law, it can also have a residential daycare facility or family daycare facility. So the lot line adjustment sounds kind of benign, but it will really change the green space that surrounds our, surrounds Yountville. In 1990, the citizens passed Measure J that was intended to preserve agricultural lands, and I'm sure you all are familiar with that, but just recently, the Measure P was passed, and it extended Measure J from 2020 to, for 50 years. So you can see that the people of Napa are very concerned about this. In fact, 62% of the voters were in approval of Measure P. We are also concerned about the fact that the general plan insists on maintaining 40 acres parcels and 160 acre parcels, so 40 acre on the valley floor, and this certainly doesn't do that. The other problem that we have is that this action contradicts a lot of the priorities that our elected officials profess to have. Mark Luce enlisting his principal issue of concern is to protect agricultural lands. Supervisor Bill Dodd's biggest issue is balance between agriculture and tourism. Supervisor Brad Wodgencheck says that his priority is maintaining agriculture, and Supervisor Keith Codell says his priority is protecting agricultural lands. A couple of weeks ago, the San Francisco Green Belt Alliance and the Bay Area Open Space Council, which is comprised of over 100 agencies in the Bay Area, put out what's called Golden Lands' Golden Opportunities, preserving vital Bay Area lands for all Californians. And what it said about Napa is, "The key goal is to tighten growth controls, to halt fragmentation and the loss of agricultural lands stemming from rural development." Another statement in the proposal that was issued as preserving open space is "the first natural step to global warming and concerns that we all have in Yountville about flood damage." Of course, the Napa County Farm Bureau and the Land Trust of Napa County also share our concerns. So we see this lot line adjustment as an end run around the ag preserve principles that we believe in, and also Measure J and Measure P. As I said, the map that was used was from 1926, over 80 years ago, but the most recent spoke, speaking of the citizens of Yountville is Measure P, which only was a couple of months ago. The proposed land use also runs counter to the intent of the Agriculture Preserve Zoning District and the preservation of open spaces. And I don't have to explain to you how this will lessen the quality of life for both the residents and the tourists. We all know that visitors come to Yountville in the Napa Valley to see vineyards and wineries. They don't come to see big giant houses. Tourism generates $1.3 billion every year in Napa. It makes, it provides over 17,000 jobs and brings in $500 million in payroll annually. Clearly, that's a significant concern to all of us. Now, I'm a lawyer, but I'm not a land use lawyer, but with the help of Bob Tierney here, I've gotten a lot of guidance, and I've become, I'm becoming a land use expert. In 1984, there was a merger law passed, and this was supposed to happen before certificates of compliance were issued. We don't know that that happened in this case. There's also a general plan compliance that you have, as I said, it has to be 40 acres. We don't know whether that was complied with. And the code instructs that unless these are complied with, not maybe, unless they're complied with or waived by a variance, they must be enforced. Not, this is, this is what we know now, but consider what will happen, could happen in the future. The construction of those houses will impact our local drainage. We're all concerned about floods. It could reduce our groundwater. Certainly, certainly, it will increase traffic through Yountville. We're going to have to have roads that go out there, and we're not going to be able to see what's right behind you, Mayor, all of that nice green space that surrounds our town. So here's what I want to do, I want you to do. I have filed an appeal, and it wasn't an easy process. They don't make that very easy for a person in the county of Napa, but I did. And we are scheduled for an appeal in front of the Board of Supervisors on March 24th at 9:45 a.m. I would like as many of you to be there as can. We also have a form letter, a sample letter, that you may sign, that you can download, or we have copies of it tonight that you can mail to our supervisors. You can speak to our supervisor, Mr. Luce, if you know him and are concerned about what our concerns are. The forum on March 24th may be our only shot, so we need all the support we can get. I have packets of materials for each of you that go into more detail about what I've just said. We have Mr. Tierney's excellent analysis of the very arcane law, I must say, but with his help, I'm digging through it, and, you know, reasonable minds may differ about whether this is in compliance with the law, but we need to have our voices heard, and we need to tell the Board of Supervisors what our concerns are and how much we want to preserve the green space around Yountville.
Thank you, Carol. You do realize that during public comment, we're not permitted to act on anything, and if we need clarification, I can defer to staff, but you're certainly welcome to leave your materials here, and we'll take a look at that.
Well, the only action I want you to take is with your feet and your voices. On March 24th, come to the Board of Supervisors meeting. The more people who are there, the more they'll know how important this issue is to us.
Thank you.
Vote with your feet.
Anyone else? Public comment? Anything that's not listed on tonight's agenda? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. Judith Caldwell, 6880 Jefferson Street. My public comments this evening involve a brief art commission update to you and a note of thanks from Babe Ruth. With the intention of sharing Yountville's art, I invited Napa Valley's Arts Council and Napa County's Commission of Art and Culture to consider meeting here in Yountville. In January, Velagio hosted our first meeting of the year. Mary Crow gave a brief description of its Impressionism and Post-Impressionism Technology Program and demonstrated its auditory partnership with classical music. At that meeting, a Commissioner from Napa suggested that vintage properties consider broadening their scope with modern pieces. So in order to eliminate any criticism or judgment, I scheduled a second meeting at Bardassono, touring Maison-Rie just beforehand, both offering a plethora of modern art. The Commissioner from Napa, whose art of choice is modern, was elated and empowered by what Yountville has at Bardassono and Maison-Rie. After several Yountville meetings, the Commissioners and Arts Council members in attendance were overwhelmed with a broad range of aesthetics, from classical to abstract, that exist right here. The warm hospitality that each Commissioner and Council member found in Yountville brought them to realize the good fortune of those who live here. Michelle Williams, Executive Director of the Napa Valley Arts Council, was prompted to schedule a reception for a number of art advocacy groups and enthusiasts on April 21st at Bardassono. Naturally, I was thrilled. This brings Yountville into a leadership role regarding the arts. I am so proud that you appointed me your representative. I shared these business cards that our town administrator printed for me, similar to those of Yountville's other public servants and staff. Steve's wise and generous gesture inspired other Commissioners to have such cards. I set up a meeting with County Supervisor Bill Dodd and NCTPA Rep. Jim Kreider to elicit stronger support for NCACC. They are both willing to help build relationship with NCTPA. Both Bill and Jim also suggested that each Commissioner continue to develop trustworthy working relationships within our respective jurisdictions. With gratefulness, I invite you, Mayor Saucerman, to continue your support at the NCTPA meeting in May, wherein the Arts Commission will be adjourned in order to set a solid foundation for NCACC with NCTPA. If, do you know what those mean?
You do.
We do, but they don't.
Okay, so, NCTPA is Napa County Transportation Association, and NCACC is Napa County Arts and Cultural Commission. And so, Madam Mayor, if you would like to discuss this in further detail, I would be delighted to continue to openly keep you posted every step of the way. We need your support. Yountville's visit by Gaylord Perry last week added a refreshing new balance to fundraising components that already exist in this wonderfully popular town. Babe Ruth baseball and their well-chosen team of coaches brought goodwill and respect that not only contributed to the positive essence of Yountville, but also strengthened baseball legend Mr. Perry's understanding of our precious town. The Grosinger event was a successful one on many levels. When Mrs. Perry commented on the community spirit and what a special town Yountville is, a fellow constituent who was with me remarked, "Our town was built on the integrity, open-mindedness, thoughtful research, insightful vision, and courage of many, many wonderful, hard-working people over the decades." Mr. Perry replied, "My hope for Yountville is that the people who live here will continue to appreciate all that you have here." Keeping a positive attitude, whether you are on the pitcher's mound or in your own home, is the winning ticket in life, Gaylord said. The Perrys will be back to visit Yountville because they were treated with the love and respect for which all men and women long. I want to personally thank you, Mayor Saucerman, for presenting him with a welcoming plaque. I'd also like to thank you, Steve Rogers, and you, Councilmember Chilton, and fellow community members for not only attending the event, but also for bidding and winning several pieces of Gaylord's memorabilia, which helped to raise several thousands of dollars for Babe Ruth. Special thanks to you, Bill, for being there, and to former Councilmember Steve Rosa as well. As your Commissioner, I've been invited to consider an ex officio Town Liaison membership on the Board of the Napa Valley Symphony. I have accepted that position, and will attend a second meeting of the Symphony Board this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Judith. Anyone else? Public comment? Anything that's not listed on tonight's agenda? Alrighty, seeing no further public comment, we'll close that and move on to the consent calendar. We have item seven, C, that's been polled for discussion. Are there any other changes or corrections to tonight's consent calendar?
I would request that we pull item seven, E, for discussion.
Alright. Anything else? Have a motion?
I'll move for approval, consent calendar, items A through J, with the exception of C and E.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None that motion carries. Item seven, C, adoption of Resolution Number 2763-09, authorizing professional services agreement with Amy L. Valukovich to provide interim town attorney services.
Briefly, the Ad-Hoc Committee met on Friday evening and made a couple modifications, and these are outlined in the handout that you have here. They differ slightly from the agreement that was in the agenda packet which was sent out in order for us to meet our publication deadline, which was Thursday. They're relatively minor, but they do address some of the council's concerns, which were clarification on external representation, allocation of cost, also on clarifying, and there are some changes in the structure for when there's a conflict of interest or she's not able to attend, and that would be a credit against our fixed fee. And there was also some change in the separation and termination language to reflect the council's concern, and also to address the counselor's concern about appropriate notification. And the real change there is that with the intent there that the town, if it chooses to exercise 30-day notice, can do so and avoid any advance payment necessary. So those are the changes, and I believe the Ad-Hoc Committee's recommendation was to approve the interim services agreement, recognizing that this is a month-to-month agreement until such time as the staff and town council conclude the RFP process anticipated sometime, hopefully in the effective date July 1st, start with the fiscal year.
Good, thank you for that. Vice Mayor Dunbar, did you have any comments?
I think that was a very good overview. There were some points that both you, Mayor, and I expressed as members of the Ad-Hoc Committee, principally dealing with the fact that this is a temporary agreement, and some of the conditions that we think might be more appropriate if this were a long-term agreement, we made some modifications, and Amy was agreeable to make some of those changes so that we felt, we feel like we are sufficiently protected if there are any concerns that come up during this interim period.
Good, thank you. Council, have any other comments on this matter?
I have one minor. Our municipal code says we have to give the town attorney 60 days' notice. Does this supersede that so, or is it in conflict in any way?
60 days for what? Termination?
Or notice for termination of the town attorney.
Yeah, it's in the modification, the handout that you received this evening. Yeah, it does say 60 days, or two months. Clarification? Sure.
And I would just point out that I'm not in this capacity giving you legal advice in my official capacity, but just...
This is pro bono work?
Right.
Okay.
It's not pro bono because it's not advice to you. It's actually, just for, just so you understand that, that in terms of retaining legal representation, every legal client has the right to have legal representation of their choice at any time. So while the ordinance might reflect that you would intend to give 60 days' notice, you don't have to give any notice, quite frankly, to have representation of your choice. So that's why it may appear that while the contract does ask for some notice, you're entitled to change your legal representation at any time without notice.
Because you're there at will?
Not because an attorney, because this contract creates some kind of employment relationship necessarily that is at will or not at will. It's just the ethical obligations of attorneys are to represent you at your pleasure, and if you decide tomorrow you'd rather be represented by someone else, you're entitled to do that.
Right. And in clarification, I'd also point out that when the municipal code was written, you have two vehicles by which you, the town council, can choose to fill the town attorney. You could appoint a town attorney, and then therefore the 60-day provision would apply. Here, you're choosing to contract for attorney services, and the professional services agreement will apply. So that is, I do think the 60-day notice provision would be applicable in the case where you appoint and that person serves as your employee.
And Mayor, if I may, just to touch on, that was a point of discussion in the Ad-Hoc meeting last Friday, and we felt while it is at our discretion to terminate the agreement, we felt that it was only fair and equitable to put in a period, but we didn't feel like 60 days, when we think that this contract may be for, you know, four months, it made any sense to have that long a notice in this particular contract. That was one of the points that I was alluding to when I said some of the terms may be appropriate if we were dealing with this. if we were dealing with this on a long-term, permanent basis.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. Just wanted to make sure we didn't have any conflict there that...
Any more questions, comments, clarifications? Have a motion?
I'll move for adoption of Resolution 2763-09 Authorizing the Professional Services Agreement with Amy L. Volukovich and provide, to provide interim town attorney services effective...
As of today, and I'd request that she take her seat at the staff table for the balance of the meeting.
If...
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None that motion carries? Thank you. Amy? You're on the clock now. Items, Consent Calendar, item 7E. Councilmember Chilton?
Before this item is presumably passed, I wanted to discuss it a little bit or make some statements. I've received an unusual amount of comment for a consent item, which is pretty rare, and there's a couple of different things that I wanted to address. First of all, this item is one of the steps in the town accepting federal stimulus money for the Yountville portion of the bike path. When I say Yountville portion of the bike path, NCTPA, the Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency, has worked on, and actually just the last meeting was presented with, a county-wide comprehensive study on how to link a bike path all the way from American Canyon to Calistoga, which would be a terrific project. That's one of the reasons that this, when I say this segment, we will connect into that entire segment. One of the reasons that this item has been chosen for stimulus money is because the town of Yountville had already put that in place in our capital improvement project and are able to move forward in an expeditious fashion, and in many ways, the most important qualification for the stimulus package is fast. The second thing that I've been asked multiple times is, why did the council choose to use this money for the bike path? And the very quick answer to this is, the council did not choose to use this money for the bike path. The agency that chose to use this for our bike path is the MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, which is a conglomeration agency of the Bay Area Transit Systems, not exactly, but I'll stick with that. Gets complicated. They got a pot of money to distribute to the Bay Area counties. One of the things that comes into play with stimulus is federal transportation formulas are used to distribute money. And what that means is federal dollars in part go to road construction and maintenance and in part go to transit. And you cannot, under really any circumstance, use that money for a reason that it wasn't earmarked. And these funds went into the pot that went into the transit side and specifically went into the subset which has to do with greenways, bike paths, those kind of projects. The obvious question is, is this what this money should be used for? And the answer is, well, we don't get to make that decision, and that's unfortunate. Because somebody asked me, "Are they going to pave Highway 29 with all the potholes?" And the answer is, no, they're not, which is unfortunate, and I would rather use this money to pave potholes on 29, but we have no control over that fact. And I think that's, again, is that unfortunate? Yes, it is. If we don't like it, we should call our congressmen and senators about it, because a lot of money has gone into this. This is good for Yountville, which is why I support it. If I had my choice, I would use it for something that I think is more important than immediate term. If we said no, this money goes back into the pot and it goes for a bike path in Marin County or in San Mateo County, and I'd rather have the bike path here for use of Yountville citizens. So, it's a, it's not necessarily a logical process, but that's how we ended up with a bike path in Yountville, and I think we should be glad, but at the same time, we can scratch our heads about it.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Chilton, and you're absolutely right in that...
I'd like to add one other thing, just so everybody is aware. Town staff is also working towards putting our improvements for the wastewater treatment plant into the application process for federal stimulus funds, and I do appreciate Councilmember Chilton's comments about the fact that careful planning on the part of town staff have certain projects that may meet, and I say may meet because there are many buckets of how federal stimulus funds are going out. There will be a category for wastewater treatment plant. There will be categories for water system improvements. There will be rural money. There will be urban money, all coming into various areas, and part of what staff is working on right now is to identify which of our projects currently in the next two fiscal years in our planning process may make sense for us to work with and apply for federal stimulus money. As you know, this happened to be a project that was moving forward in the design phase, but actually, if you look at our CIP, you will note, it didn't have construction phase. We were actually doing the preliminary planning, and that's where we're fortunate, and we're about to go to bid with our wastewater treatment plant modernization. So I'm very excited that we may be able to save the ratepayers and the state since the Veterans Home are partner if we move forward with that project.
Thank you.
I have one comment to Steve's comment. Do we get to use any of this million dollars to help support your staff that might be involved with the execution of this?
The project grant has, you know, legitimate costs to reimburse, so yes, to that extent that staff is involved, most of this will be utilizing our lean staff, primarily the manager's office and the public works, and then our contract team. We will be coming back to you shortly with a, potentially a design-build approach, as well as a construction management firm proposal to move forward with the project.
Mayor Sauserman, if I could, just, I had a couple of comments on this or questions. All of this property is on Caltrans as it exists now that will be used?
Not 100% true. There are some, somewhere it comes back up and it comes back in. As you know, the town has a route that comes back behind the Hotel Luca and then meeting up with where Washington Square is. So I don't want to say 100%. It may very well be that the final route, Councilmember Dutton, does end up principally on Caltrans right-of-way, but there may be some points that actually wean back and forth depending on the right-of-way that's ultimately selected.
Because it did indicate in the write-up that all of it was on Caltrans.
There is the potential for that.
Potential, okay. I also, and I didn't see it here, some other article that there was some type of construction was going to be done where there could possibly be sound walls attached to this in the future?
One of the design criteria that we want to look at is, given the fact that we have to create a structure that provides a vehicle barrier so people can't bounce off 29 into the pedestrians or the bicyclists, we're choosing to take the approach of designing that particular barricade so that in the future, it could potentially support a sound wall if that is something that may be appropriate. And I don't want to suggest that there's this big wall. There's all sorts of different approaches, including clear sound walls and some different technology, but the idea is, rather than find ourselves 10 years down the road having to redo everything at a cost, there can be some cost savings achieved by incorporating for that potentiality at this time.
And I might add, I would hope that when it's completed, and apparently if it's on the fast track, that would eliminate a lot of our massive bicycle rides through town that upset everybody, so I would say that's an upside. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Not to be left out. I just wanted to reiterate that this is money that we were going to have to come up with, potentially, whether it was a million dollars or not, we don't know that, but to make this thing happen, and as Councilmember Dutton said, to get some of the bike traffic out of downtown, we were going to have to fund that. And I think that this is a great opportunity for us to partner with the county and the regional agencies. While it may not be the ultimate priority, we certainly have no control over what happens on Highway 29, but we do have control over how this can be designed and implemented and make it a real win for Yountville. So, I'm excited, and as Steve mentioned, the opportunity to take this even a step further, and I know Congressman Mike Thompson is working on our behalf to try to get more of this ready-to-go money for projects that are deemed worthy, and I think it's another great opportunity to take advantage of. You know, remember also, these are local jobs potentially that are being created, and there are other indirect benefits, so I think it's a great, great opportunity for Yountville.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move for adoption of Consent, Item 7E.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None that motion carries? Thank you. Item 8, Presentations. Recognition of Service for Interim Finance Director Cindy Rosenberg. Cindy, if you could come up to the podium?
Cindy's been working with us for four months now as our interim finance director. Done a fantastic job. And on behalf of the town of Yountville and the Yountville Town Council, Cindy Rosenberg with service, sincere appreciation for your contributions to the town of Yountville, Yountville Town Council and Staff 2009. Thank you.
I would, I was going to plan on thanking all of you tonight anyway for the opportunity to work in Yountville and to get to know all of you. I've really enjoyed myself. You have a great town. You have a wonderful staff. You have a terrific city manager, but I, he has way more energy than I have. But I've had a wonderful time. I am leaving you in very capable hands. I've been working with your new finance director now for seven, working eight days, and she's going to be terrific, so hopefully I'll get to come back and visit when you open the new community center and maybe one I'm just passing through. I would also like you all to meet my husband, Grady. He's been very patient and suffering long absences at home and taking care of things, so, but he's come to drive the motorhome home, so.
Yay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Cindy.
Item 8B, Mosquito Abatement District Annual Report. Do we have a presentation?
That would be me. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and staff. I'm Stephen Rosa. Some of you might remember me. I am the town's representative of the Napa County Mosquito Abatement District, and I've held that capacity for slightly over 19 years. The Mosquito Abatement District has gone through a lot of machinations over the years. As many of you may or may not know, our site was at the Napa Sanitation Site on Mall Avenue. We were displaced by the Flood Control District when they acquired that property. We were gypsies for a while until we acquired property in the City of American Canyon, who was kind enough to sell us two-thirds of an acre down there, and we've been there ever since. We have a brand-new facility. It's been open for a while. I've brought with me tonight Mr. Wesley Maffey, who's the manager of the district. He's been with us for 11 years. His energy and his forward thinking have brought the district along wonderfully, pulled us out of near bankruptcy and expanded staff and expanded services. We were strictly a mosquito abatement district. Now we're mosquito and disease control. We eradicate yellow jackets, we do some rodenticiding for rodents, and we do tick monitoring also for Lyme disease and other diseases within Napa County. And in fact, we just completed a study with another agency on tick diseases. So, having said that, I'll turn it over to Wes, and he can give you more of the nitty-gritty of the mosquito abatement district.
Members of the council, citizens of Yountville, thank you again for this opportunity tonight. Really quick, just a quick backtrack, sort of a reminder about the district. The Mosquito Abatement District has been in continuous operation since 1925, and it was actually formed by the citizens of Napa County, primarily because of the mosquito problem that existed more in the southern part of the county, especially in the Canaries area. And for many, many decades, that was our primary focus, and we had one employee that was part-time. And since then, of course, the district has grown. We now have nine employees, including myself. We cover the entire county, so it doesn't matter where a citizen might reside. If they call, we will show up. That is our job, and our primary focus is mosquito control, mosquito-borne disease. We have expanded, as Mr. Rosa has said, and we now deal with yellow jackets, and sometimes we'll help folks with paper wasps and other stinging insects. We also deal with rodents, primarily more advice on how to deal with them and their biology, but there are times when we will do some rodenticiding, but it is limited. The tick work, in this case, Napa County, up until recently, we knew nothing about the ticks that were here, the potential for disease. In the last couple of years, the amount of work that we've done, both with state health and with UC Berkeley and UC Davis, what we've discovered is that, yes, Lyme disease is prevalent. It's very prevalent in this county. We have located positives near the state hospital. We have positive ticks at both a park and a number of other locations where we're beginning to do that work. We have an ongoing study right now up near Lake Barriessa, and we're actually surveying birds as potential carriers of nymphal ticks, and we're looking at those ticks to see whether or not disease is present. And so this is the second year of that study. At this time, we haven't found any positives, but again, the state is pretty sure that we will, so we'll keep you posted as to what we find. In terms of our budget, we operate on a budget of about $1.8 million. Again, the majority of those funds go towards the control programs, and most of our programs, we focus on not only public education, such as the radio announcements that we now have out, but we'll start our newspaper ads that we do every year, and that should be starting in the next couple of weeks, and that'll continue through October. We use primarily biological control agents, such as mosquito fish, bacteria specific to mosquitoes. We use insect growth hormones, again, specific to mosquitoes. Our focus is to have as minimal an impact on the environment as possible, yet keep people informed and try to minimize the risk of disease. That has become much more important with the advent of West Nile virus. Here in Napa County, we have been monitoring birds and mosquitoes now since 2004. We have found positive birds throughout the county, including the town of Yountville. We've only had two human cases of West Nile virus, both locally contracted, one in Calistoga, one in South Napa. We have been fortunate compared to many other counties in the state where our incidence of West Nile virus has been low. It is still significant, and we need to be aware of that, and so we continue to get that word out. It's really important to manage the water because that's the key. It's the best way to control mosquitoes without having to resort to other methodologies. And with that, I'll just open it up for questions.
Council, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Keep up the good work. Item 8C, Community Services Program Annual Report for 2008.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. We have informational report here regarding the Community Services Department 2008 Programs. As you know, the Community Services Department is composed of three divisions, Administrative, Recreation, and Facility. I'm going to present the information on the Administration and Recreation Programs. Lisa, tonight is going to talk about the facilities, which includes the pool and the community hall. This year, I've broken the report down and basically have picked up on the last page, look at, well, next to last page, page 11 highlights, and I'll briefly go over those highlights with you, and then if you have any questions, you can ask for greater detail. One of our major functions is providing the park reservations, facility reservations. This year, we had a total of 207 reservations. That's up about 13% over last year, and each year they go up increasingly. That's up about thirteen percent over last year, and each year they go up increasingly. One hundred and twenty-four of those were for the Yountville picnic area, which was one, two, and three, and the majority of the picnic area rentals go to site number one. That's the closest one to the tot lot. Then we have the Veterans Park picnic areas, and that had forty-two reservations this year. The Bachi Courts had forty-one reservations. The approximate number of guests, nine hundred. That's from their applications, what they put on, and so that's where we totally find that figure. We, rental fees collected was four thousand five hundred and forty dollars. So, and each year, our, our park rentals are going up, and so it depends on how you look at it, it's a good thing or a bad thing, but we have lots of complaints, so we'll look at it as a good thing. The other function that we handle are the special event permits. This year, we had a total of forty-two special events. Last year, nineteen were for special events such as the bike races, the runs through town, those kind of large things. We had eighteen amplified noise permits. We had five still photo permits, and from the applications we look at, we had a total of twenty-four thousand people who attended these events, and we take what, what numbers that they give us on the applications when they apply. Currently, we don't charge for issuing special event permits, but we'll be coming to you with a proposal to have some fees for that, because when I look at it, when we look at staff time, probably eighty hours a year given to special events of my time, so we wanna look at that. Youth subsidy fund, that's another program that we do this year. Last year, we, we did forty-eight awards, and nine of those were for the before and after-school program. Five were for the camp grants. Five were for pool grants. Twenty-one, nine were for program excursions. Each year, we bring in money to support the fund. About eleven thousand was raised, was brought in this year. Some of that money is raised by the travelers, a group which benefits from youth subsidy, and some of that is raised at the pool snack bar. So, we're continually looking at that program and looking at ways to improve it. This was, last year was the first year that we asked the people applying for the fund to pay twenty-five percent of the cost of, of the fund, before everything was free, but this year, we, we required twenty-five percent of the cost, and that has gone over well. It ties people closer to the programs. Now, I'll, I'll speak a little bit about the recreation programs. You know, annually, we put on quite a few recreation programs in the division. On page three of the report, we list all our basic annual programs, from the annual egg hunt to the tree lighting program. The Community Services Department organizes and conducts those events. Some of the highlights of, of that program, the, the recreation division programs include the Yountville Days Parade and Festival, which this year, we were able to enhance the parade and festival by bringing in more booths. We brought in arts and crafts and other booths that the people seem to enjoy, and we'll look at increasing that and doing that, and providing that activity for people. The tree lighting program, which is the second year that we were able to put a tree down on a point. This year, the tree was about twenty-five foot tall. It was decorated in lights, and from all the feedback I got from residents, they really enjoyed that, and it really made people smile and feel good for the, for the Christmas season, along with the, the lights up around town. We had support from the Bonosanos, who, who, who supported that with a grant to pay for the tree. The Veterans Home let us use, well, they didn't let us use, they brought the cherry picker down, they provided the staff, and they helped us decorate it. And so, that, that was a highlight of our, our programs this year. We do, I say many programs, and I had the number here in terms of the number of different programs we have done all year. And most of them are, are doing well, and the ones that don't, we do review, and we try to go back and look at them and either create something or, or no longer do the program, no longer provide it if it's not being supported. Some of the growth areas, though, has been with the senior program, which is growing. It started with a small group, and the group is growing, and they're meeting on a quarterly basis to help plan and to plan their programs and activities. The before and after-school program is another major program sponsored by the Community Services Department. It provides before and after-school care for working families and anyone who wants to enroll their, their child in the program. Some people do it just so their children have other children to communicate, to socialize with, and, and the program's open to primarily Yountville residents and, and children going to Yountville Elementary School. We enroll people by the month for their program, so they pay a monthly fee for the program. However, we allow drop-ins to the program daily. About three years ago, some of residents came to us and wanted us to implement a drop-in program, so we did that, and that part is still going strong. We do pick up significant revenues from drop-in. It costs more to drop in than to register for the whole month, but some people, you know, choose to drop in versus... And with that, our program, we have on the average of sixty-five people enrolled in, in the program. If you dropped into the after-school program, you probably won't see sixty-five students. You probably see something, you know, like fifty-nine and a half, because this is, we take enrollment fees, and that's how many people enroll. However, daily, the average daily attendance is a little lower. So over the ten-month period, that's six hundred and fifty people enrolled in the program, because it is a monthly program that they enroll in, and that's how we get that figure. As of December two thousand and eight, we collected thirty thousand dollars for the program, and we are on, on, meeting our expectations. Last year, we brought in about the same amount this time of year, so budget-wise, we're right in the same ballpark. Our, our goal is to, this was eighty-five percent, to cover eighty-five percent of the program with the fees. Yountville Summer Camp is the other program that we run, and that's a summer camp program. That averages about sixty-two campuses a week, and we also do drop-in for that, too, one and three-day drop-ins, but the total, the full enrollment for the program is five, five days. And it, it, it is comprised of basically sixty-three, sixty-three percent residents and thirty-seven percent non-residents in the camp. Enrollment fees for last year was fifty-three thousand, and drop-in, well, not enrollment, enrollment fees collected, right, was fifty-three thousand dollars, and drop-ins for the program was one hundred and sixty-two. And we're at the same point where we were last year in looking at the fees and things like that. This year, we're going to have to look at our fees, because the Napa Valley Unified School District is going to pass along rental use for the facility. They need to pass that cost along to us, and that looks like it's gonna be about, what was that? Look that up, make sure I get the right amount for that. Estimate that, was that five thousand a month, Steve, we were looking at? I forget what that was.
I think it's in the neighborhood of five hundred and fifteen a week.
Fifteen, a week, yeah. So, and if we're looking on passing that on to the, to the parents, to the people using the program, it's only gonna be a couple of dollars a month, but that would be a, a increase for the program for next year, so. And that's about two thousand dollars a month in terms of the cost of the program. Next, some of the statistics for the recreation events. We had a number of excursions, and we had six events that were the excursions. A number of programs were seven, so that's a total of thirteen. We're estimating about seven thousand people participating in terms of programs, in terms of enrolling in those programs and participating. So at this time, if you'd like to ask some questions on that, on the recreation portion, or if you wanna wait till after Lisa gives her report on the pool and the community.
Does council have any questions for Ken? Vice Mayor?
Getting back to the special event permits, Ken. In years past, we've had some issues with maybe some of the larger bike events that have come through town. Do you know of any ongoing issues that we have with any of the repeat business, or it doesn't seem like we've had any recently?
Right. I guess about three years ago, we had some real, three or four years ago, we had some issues with a couple of the clubs, but having talked with them and, and them a couple of letters, and then having the sheriff talk with them, those things have subsided. We require them to all have monitors at the major intersections in town, and they have complied with that, and we do talk with them about the event when it's going through town. And I do also require them to call and talk to the sheriff regarding their event, and those things seem to have worked to eliminate...
And the same, same goes for some of the town-wide events, like you mentioned, Yountville Days and upcoming Tasty Yountville, those types of, of town-wide events, I think have been pretty incident-free.
Right, yes. The ones that the town runs and Chamber and all the other. When people apply for a special event, we wanna get as complete description of the event as possible, because if I don't know what's going on with the event, then I can't mitigate any of the problems that might arise out of that. And most people do wanna come back, and so they've been pretty good, you know? And you can, you can tell that we haven't had major problems, but I wanna knock one on that, because anything can happen, yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Ken?
And I will entertain other questions at the end of the report, too.
Okay, now I'll talk to you. All right.
Lisa Tyler, Community Services Facility Supervisor. Tonight, I'll be reporting on the community pool, the leisure classes, and the community hall, and give you a brief overview of all these programs. The community pool. In two thousand and eight, the pool was open a total of eighty-six days, which accounted for fifty-six hours of community program in a week, which equals five hundred and four hours of programming offered. Swimming lessons provided an additional forty-eight hours of programming. We offered a variety of programs, such as a senior swim, recreation swim, three sessions of swim lessons, aqua aerobics, lap swimming, resident swim, and family swim. This year, we ran two new programs. One was called the lifeguard reimbursement program. This program encouraged youth who was interested in taking the lifeguard certification program. Upon passing and being hired and completing two hundred hours for working for the town, the employee would be reimbursed for his or her certification fees. We had six participant, participants in this program, and four were reimbursed. The next program was our junior lifeguard prep class. This class was offered free of charge for two weeks for youth ages eleven to fifteen years of age. The class was taught by two of our senior lifeguards, and it was geared to youth who were interested in someday becoming a lifeguard. Our emphasis was placed on fitness, swimming skills, prevention of drowning, basic lifeguard techniques and skills and responsibilities. We had fifteen students enrolled in this class, and they completed the class with a certification. Now, community pool revenues. When compared to two thousand and seven, the two thousand and eight pool revenue increased by six thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Overall, use at the pool increased by two thousand nine hundred and seventy users, with a majority being non-residents. Our swim lesson attendance also increased this year, with fifty-six participants, with a total of eight thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars in revenue. Swim passes generated a total of seven thousand four hundred dollars in, forty dollars in revenue. And then our entrance fees brought in thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars, as well as our snack bar, which was very successful this year with all the goods we were able to sell, brought in a total of six thousand nine hundred and ninety-three Leisure classes. In two thousand and eight, we offered a variety of leisure classes, from different types of ballroom dancing, to fencing, golf, crochet, and karate. We partnered with the Napa Valley Adult School to offer free classes in pliatis, Spanish, and alternative mixed media, which is a type of painting class. In two thousand and eight, we had a total of six hundred and eighty-seven users enrolled in our classes. In the past, we have offered an additional fourteen different types of leisure classes. We have reached out to the public for their suggestions, as well as having instructors basically approach me with types of classes they would like and recommendations from other staff. Some classes, like tango, have been very successful in the past, while others have fallen to the wayside based on low enrollments and sometimes this lack of interest after so many weeks or months of the class. So we're constantly trying to find new classes to offer people and entice them to come to use the facilities. Community hall. Usage at the community hall was down by ten reservations from a hundred and sixteen in two thousand and seven to a hundred and six in two thousand and eight. As in the past, local town nonprofits used the hall most consistently in two thousand and eight and increased usage by three events. Next was town government, followed by non-resident usage. Local residents used the hall less this year, with thirteen rentals versus nineteen in two thousand and seven. Non-residents' usage increased by five rentals in two thousand and eight. The most popular months for the hall happened to be in June and August, followed by December this year. We typically are very busy in the months of September and October for wedding receptions, but this year, rentals were down. Possible reasons for this decline could be associated with the poor economy and construction at and around the hall and our lack of parking at the facility. Fee waivers this year, fee waivers are used one time per year by our local nonprofits and are also granted by the town manager for other organizations if their event qualifies. This year, we had a total of eighteen fee waivers granted, which came to a total of six thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents worth of granted fee waivers. Does the council have any questions for me?
Council, have any questions for Lisa?
Do, one question, are you, you're able to, to schedule for later this year, or more likely, twenty-ten for the use?
We're looking at very late this year. We've, I've not been given an updated exact date for the month of October, so it's a little iffy, so I'm looking forward to December and then for two thousand and ten, which people are actively looking right now.
Great, thanks.
Any more questions? Councilmember Dutton?
Well, I, I don't know if there's a question, maybe just an observation, reading through this, it appears that in almost all of these agendas, certainly the non-resident portion has grown significantly, which I guess you could look at a number of ways. One, obviously with our limited population, it probably is not gonna grow that much, but whatever we're offering seems to be very popular to non-residents, and I would assume if you can handle it fine. I guess my only suggestion would be, as you work to cut the, you know, the funding gap here as much as possible, that that source would be maybe heavily relied upon versus the residents. I mean, I know you alluded to a few of these things in here, as far as, one, I think was the fees for the park or these. I agree with you, I'd, I'd make them a lot higher than you had it. I mean, you don't want them to walk away and just leave a mess there. I would make them clean it up. So, for a hundred bucks, a lot of them might just walk away and say, I can't clean up for a hundred dollars.
Sure, we're, we're looking at the, the deposit, deposits are returned to people if the park is found in good condition.
Correct, and that's rightly so, I agree. I don't think you had one for residents, and you alluded to that was some of the biggest violations. That's the only comment I had, is that I think as you look to fund, you know, the closure, maybe you look more than that line, because that's certainly gonna be the one that's gonna grow.
Yes.
That's it.
Councilmember Tillman?
Well, I had a similar observation, and Lisa, you can look at it a variety of ways. One thing that did strike me, and always strikes me when I look at this, is we're a town of three thousand people, and the array of services that we are able to provide is, is pretty amazing, I think. And I, I have never believed that it makes sense to look at a local as simply Yountville. If there's somebody who lives on Darms Lane, or they live in North Napa, or they live in Rutherford, you know, I mean, we're all kind of in this together, so I think what's, what's interesting about the numbers is how many non-residents do use our services, and if we did not have those non-residents coming, one, some of these probably couldn't, you couldn't justify having a program for a couple of people, and second, they do make a fairly substantive financial contribution. I agree, I think we should look at, at some of the fees, but I also wanna make sure that we recognize that a lot of our programs we're able to do, because we can reach outside of our actual town limits, to other local Napa Valley residents, and we don't wanna strangle that off to say, hey, let's just, let's stick it to them, because they won't come. And you don't want an empty pool, or you don't want classes get canceled, because now nobody's coming, so I think there's a good balance that can be provided at there.
Good comment. Anyone else? Councilmember Muller?
When I was looking through this, I found it particularly helpful on especially how it was prepared, looking at... looking at pool revenue and the expenditures and you could really capture, you captured all this really nicely. And just thinking about that when we're getting ready to do our recreation or community service business plan and our budgets that are coming up, it'd be really helpful if you could actually use what you did here, putting expenses and revenues together for each one of your three aspects of your department. I would find that since you've got so much information in this document, I think it's going to be valuable when we do those two projects.
Thank you, yes.
Good, thank you Lisa.
Probably just had one last one I should have, I'm sorry. I did notice it appears that an ongoing problem is, especially with the pool, is finding people. You alluded to it a number, and I think you mentioned that you're open more hours than any other of the pools in the valley and this type of thing. And it, obviously if you look at the expense, it's a significant part of it. I was just curious if there's, if you've looked at it well, maybe a way you could reduce the hours but still hold your programs. You know, I mean, I'm not saying a massive cut, but it would seem like an hour or two maybe would sort of reduce the dependence you have to have on this many lifeguard and probably won't decrease your revenue any.
Most of you know I'm not used to brief answers, but the answer is yes.
Thank you.
There will be some restructuring of the pool time and availability and overall season length.
Outstanding. Thank you, Ken, Lisa.
Thank you.
Item nine, public hearing preliminary master development plan review Vineyard Oaks subdivision. Are there any conflicts?
Yes, Mayor, I do have a conflict with this ongoing project due primarily to my residence being within 500 feet of this project. So I will be stepping down from the dais during this item.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I make a statement that I have met with the applicant to review this proposal?
I met with the applicant as well to go over some of the elements of the design in this proposal just today.
And I received an email from the applicant on Friday 13th, actually. He introduced himself in his email and then he stated that after you have received, reviewed the staff report and attachments for the Vineyard Oak public hearing at Tuesday's town council meeting, I'm available at your convenience to answer any questions you have about the project. He then stated, I'm looking forward to presenting our project at the town council. Healthy Building USA and I have worked diligently to meet the town zoning and design standards for the RM district and to listen and adopt neighbor suggestions. We have designed a project that we expect will receive a high Build It Green residential rating and Leeds Residential Gold rating. Please email me or call me with any comments or questions about your, our project. I'll be happy to discuss our project with you by phone or meet with you on Monday or Tuesday. So on Sunday, I replied to Eric. Thank you very much for your offer to discuss Vineyard Oaks subdivision project. As you know, a large and critical part of the responsibility of elected officials is to ensure the integrity of the deliberative process itself. While the town of Yountville does not currently have a restrict prohibitive on communication between applicants and council members, many California agencies and municipalities do. All things considered, it's my view that avoiding direct contact between individual council members and applicants outside of public hearings removes even the taint of impropriety from decisions the town council reaches. In the long run, this benefits everybody, including our applicants. If the council decides in their favor, there can be no assertions of undue influence. If all discussions are fully transparent, shared by all council members at the same time. All of us look forward to hearing about your Vineyard Oaks subdivision as part of the public hearing. I feel this allows everyone to benefit for open discussion and allows the other council members to share fully in assessing the merits of your position. Eric then replied to me today. Thank you for your email. After serving two terms on the Yountville Town Council, I understand your concerns about perceived conflict of interest when council members meet with applicants. I was very concerned about this as well when I served and significantly limited my meetings with applicants. Was very careful to report the contents of the meeting. Thanks for your email. I look forward to a presentation tonight.
Mayor, I too received, I think essentially the same email. I did not respond, I just go in on what I read.
Okay. Thank you for those disclosures. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you. This is a preliminary master development plan review for a proposed residential subdivision at 1901 Yountville Crossroad. It is on the east side of Stagsview Lane, which is at the bottom of this graphic. There, the project consists of twelve market rate detached single-family dwellings and six, four, a fourplex, for a total of sixteen units on thirteen lots. The existing, I'm going to, the design team for, the applicant is here as well as the applicant, so I'll try to provide a brief summary and then turn it over to them to have a presentation as well. The existing conditions on the site, the site is largely vacant on the south half. In the past, there's been an Ace Hardware Store, a fence company, and more recently Wolf Vineyard Management operating on the north portion. All of those structures on the north portion will be removed as a result of this proposal. There are a total of ten Heritage Oaks in our survey. And they're essentially clustered in the southeast corner along the east boundary. Going down to the proposed site plan here. Another couple of existing conditions that this site plan had to work around included, there are two storm drain easements that cross the site at the south boundary, fifteen foot in width. And then an additional one that is here, I'm seeing this right, between lots six and seven. It's fifteen foot in width as well. The site generally has a somewhat of a difficult shape to work with in that it's fairly deep for lots and then widens out as it approaches Yountville Crossroad at the north end here. As you know, there's an existing housing development across Stagsview Lane that consists of ten units that was developed some time ago under different zoning requirements than this project. Each of these lots is approximately fifteen, or excuse me, fifty feet in width. And that's about the minimum width you can achieve when you take into consideration there's a five-foot yard, side yard requirement on each side as well as, which all of these lots achieve, as well as a twenty-foot wide garage and the dwelling facade must be an additional five feet wider than the garage. So you've got ten feet in yards, twenty feet in house and another twenty-five, excuse me, twenty feet in garage and another twenty-five in house. So that's fifty feet on the button and that's what they've achieved in each one of these. And even doing that, they end up with deeper lots than would perhaps be necessary otherwise, but the shape of the overall site dictates that. And that, that'll be a point I'll bring up later when we talk about exceptions. So there's a total of five two-story buildings proposed with this plan. And in tonight's review of this preliminary plan, what we're really examining is the subdivision portion of this and how the lots are divided up, how the lots receive access, rather than the architecture. They do have some elevations prepared for each one of these. And there's a total of five building models, A through F. A, there are three represented. B, four. C has, is the fourplex. D has three and then E and F each have one. There's a total of five two-stories. And they're distributed across the site on this lot 12, lot 10, lot 8. These four are all one-stories. Lot 3 is a two-story. And then up in the corner here is the fourplex and they're two detached units that are each two stories. All of the one-story buildings are approximately sixteen feet in height. The plan D is twenty-seven and a half feet in height and that is the tallest of the, all of them. The lot 3 is twenty-five feet in height, this two-story. And then the other ones are the twenty-seven and a half. That again meets the requirement of, the height is limited to twenty-eight feet overall to the peak. Each of these dwellings has a two-car garage and the, each garage is set back ten feet from the face of the house as required. The parking for the fourplex is a driveway off of Yountville Crossroad. And it is four covered spaces and it's deep enough for tandem spaces in front of the covered parking. And even with the tandem spaces and the covered parking, there's sufficient backup area for each of these to head out onto Yountville Crossroad rather than backing out. This orientation for the fourplex is, this is the front yard, twenty feet and they're providing a rear yard, twenty foot. And then five foot and then the drive aisle is twenty-four foot in width. These lots are generally, the distribution of them is, the majority of them in size is the mid six thousands to the mid seven thousand. The largest lot at about ninety-two hundred square feet is the fourplex lot. And then the smallest lots are these two just west of the duplex, or the fourplex lots. And they're about seventy, or forty-seven hundred square feet, each forty-seven eighty-five. All of the unit As, which are on lots five, seven and nine, have a wine cellar that's at a basement level. And all of the unit Bs have a basement level living room. And those are located on lots four, six, eleven and thirteen. Lot 3 has a, this is the two-story. It has a garage that, if I have it right, lot one, excuse me, it's a one-story. It's a, actually reads as a one and a half story because the garage itself, as you go down the driveway, it goes under an upper story living element that's kind of a split, well, not really a split level. It's a, appears to be a story and a half at the, over the garage itself. The garage extends above grade and then the floor over it. Down at this end, there will be, on the Heritage Oaks, all of the Heritage Oaks except two of them will be retained, so eight of the ten will be retained. There's also an existing condition right now, some grade that was brought in and this approximate half of the site was artificially raised and that will be lowered down. So these, the finished floor of these houses will actually be lower than is apparent by looking at the site right now because that grade will be removed. There are some exceptions that are involved with this application and they fall into primarily two groups. One has to do with these two garages down here on lots one and three, where the rear yard setback is required to be twenty feet because they're attached to the house. They are fourteen feet at both of these. And the other, the nature of the second exception, a group of exceptions, has to do with the total lots being, or units being sixteen, benefit from an FAR bonus that's allowed by virtue of the, providing twenty-five percent of the total units as affordable units. This fourplex, they will all be affordable units. They will be distributed throughout the categories of very low, low and moderate, with the fourth being determined by council. But that allows an FAR bonus up to forty percent for the project. When that requirement kicks in and is used, only twenty-five percent of the single-family dwellings may be over sixty-five hundred square feet. And in this case, approximately, well, there are fifty-four percent of the total single-family dwellings exceed the sixty-five hundred square foot limitation. Those are found on lots four through nine.
Bob, you're making reference to the dwelling units themselves. Are you talking about lot sizes?
I'm talking about lot sizes.
Okay.
Did I say dwelling, I'm sorry.
Those were big houses.
Good catch. So it's the lot sizes that exceed sixty-five hundred square feet and then thirteen. So it's this row here of four through nine. And then the one at the southern end. Those are in the high six thousands for lots seven, eight and nine. And then the low, two mid seven thousands for four, five, six and thirteen. There's a table that's included in your staff report, is attachment six, that explains that. There's also throughout the staff report mention of another alternative and we're going to not focus on that and only use the four affordable units scenario in the consideration of this plan tonight. Also, subsequent to the staff report being submitted, there were some minor changes, very minor changes to some of the sizes of the dwelling units. Not significant, although it did put one, the unit on lot three, very slightly over the FAR and I think we can work to reduce that to forty percent. In your packet, there were a number of comments, including the ZDRB comments of their more, most recent review of this on February 10th. And also, as noted, there were some elevations that have been developed that show the craftsman farmhouse style that is going to be used. And we're not really reviewing that tonight, that will come at the final review. And the floor plans as well. So I think that will conclude my report. If you have any questions, I could answer and then they have a presentation.
Good, thank you. Does council have any questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Chilton?
I have two questions, Bob. I attended the ZDRB meeting with this, slightly, the previous plan, a slight iteration different was presented. One of the concerns that was brought up regarding the duplexes was the fact that lot two had actually two buildings on it and therefore should be treated as a fourplex. I just didn't see that there was an answer, I think Board Member James brought that up, about whether the FAR calculations and setbacks and et cetera for fourplex parcel were being met with this or whether that was also an exception that was being asked for.
No. During our last housing element, one of the things that was corrected that was in, viewed as an impediment to the development of multifamily housing, which in, in turn could be viewed as more affordable generally speaking, was we had a limitation on the number, the size of the site and the number of units that could be built. And we amended the zoning ordinance to allow larger sites for multiple family dwellings and in this configuration. It's two detached buildings, it's fourplex though, so it's achieving its, it's a... It's two detached buildings, it's four-plex though, so it's achieving, it's, it's a, it's under the .40 for FAR, and, and will achieve the height and setbacks.
Okay, excellent, I just wanted to make, I didn't see that addressed in the staff report, and I wanted to make sure that was addressed, because it wasn't in ZDRB. The second one has to do with the tandem spaces on the duplexes. The concern about the, how realistic tandem spaces are, and whether somebody's going to attempt to park on Yountville Cross, or then there'll be parking over on Stagsview Lane. Has that complication been considered?
Well, the, the way this works right now is that the, and you're talking about guest parking, or providing guest parking.
Well, even-
Yeah, we wouldn't-
Even, even to, you know, my wife parks in first, and I park in second, now she wants to leave, and now I have to move, and eventually I just get sick of that. So I don't know if that, even that consideration in terms of the success of tandem parking spaces. I understand we've got a, we've got a very constrained site here.
Yeah, our, our ordinance currently permits tandem parking if it's accepted by the council. It's in the case of affordable units and second units. In this case, you know, as you see, it's a fairly, the covered parking, this is, so there'd be one under there, and then one behind, and then the back-out area, the 28-foot deep drive aisle, which is, actually exceeds the minimum requirement would be a 24-foot drive, wide drive aisle. So it will be a tandem situation, there'll need to be some, some cooperation on, on everyone here. I would imagine the units will be assigned parking.
But that is specifically in the zoning ordinance on the situation?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And one, you're right, though, we would not want, and there is no room out on Yountville Cross to, to park at the curb, and they would be down on Stags, Stagsview Lane.
Thank you.
Any more questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Muller?
I have three questions. In the zoning ordinance, it talks about proposed dedication for public use, including space for, you know, parks and play areas. How do we address that?
Parks and play area, other than open space for each of the-
Or, and it just, it just says, it says item number 7 in section 7.4. D, open space, parks, or play areas.
Right. For, for each, you're talking, referring to the four-plex specifically?
I'm referring, I think, to the whole property. I think that's what it's referring to in the zoning, is that right?
Yeah, normally, it's open space for each of the individual single-family lots is their, their, their big lots, as they go.
Oh, okay, that's, that's what open space is, okay, that helps.
And then they have the yards front and back, and, and on this side here that would-
I think that answers my question. I just, for some reason, just didn't consider the yard the open space, but that, that totally answers that question. And then, you didn't mention it here, but I'm just assuming that in item 12 in that section, it says there, at this preliminary stage, you'll have a written statement outlining the mitigation measures for flooding, excess seismic standards, and noise.
Right, what, one thing that is in progress now is environmental review for this, and we're completing an initial study. The applicant has provided a number of studies for a traffic study, and a geotech study, and others that will be incorporated into that environmental review, and that itself has to be adopted at the next meeting.
So is, is that recital D in the resolution? Is that what, is that covered there? Because that, that's the sequel, is that what you're talking about?
That's the sequel requirement, yes.
Okay, so that's, so it's not in the preliminary, but it'll be in the final?
Yes.
That's what you're saying, okay. And then the last question is on the Heritage Oaks. It said you're removing two, and there was a proposal, I think in the ZDRB minutes, for replacing those two with a three-to-one with 24-inch trees. And also, it said that the, that there'd be a mitigation plan would appear in the final master development plan for this. Can you-
Yeah.
-address that further?
Part of what is involved with a, an initial study, the outcome is anticipated to be a mitig, what's called a mitigated negative declaration.
Uh huh.
And a mitigated negative declaration has to be accompanied by what's called a mitigation monitoring and reporting program that spells out the mitigations that will be incorporated into the project. Prior to the next meeting, the applicant will identify those mitigations that avoid significant environmental impacts, and the applicant must agree to incorporate those mitigations into the proposal. Part of that consideration will be the trees as well, and where those go, and how many, and-
So that'll be in the, in the final plan that's coming up?
Yes, so there's both addressing other tree removal and a formal adoption, that also must be, that program must be adopted along with the mitigated negative deck.
Okay, and so that also then takes care of, you, in that same report, you'll talk about preserving the healthy trees, because right now it's just a, a concept-
Yes.
-right, for bio-swell and subdrain?
Yeah, there's a whole-
Without subdrain.
An entire section that addresses biological impacts.
Okay, that's all, thanks.
Councilmember Dunn, any questions?
No, I don't.
Is the applicant here? Are you ready to make your presentation?
Good evening.
You're on, yeah.
Eric Knight, 6638 Jefferson Street in Yountville. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to come back to you tonight with our presentation. Last time we were here, I think it was in the fall of '07. Since then, we've spent a lot of time on various versions, iterations of this plan, and last fall, we decided we needed to come back to hear some public comment, and we did come back in the fall of '08 to zoning and design review board with an application. And at that time, I think we, we received some very good comments from the board, and it was, it was a good idea for us to come to talk to them. After that meeting, I recognized we needed to really revise and make some, you know, move in a different direction in terms of the site plan, and at that time, we changed architects, and we currently are using John Massaro, who's with Healthy Buildings, and he's not here this evening, but I expect he'll be back in the near future, really, to go over architecture and to review that with you. But from that meeting, you know, we made changes, I think, as you asked us to do in, in '07, was to work with the neighbors, try to communicate with them, and to make changes that would, would balance the interests of the neighborhood and the community's needs on this property, and I think we did have done a, a very good job with the application that's before you tonight. I'm glad that we're, we're here. It's, I think it's been about, it's been over four years that I've been working with Bob Massaro and Healthy Buildings with an intent to try to bring to the community a green building project, and for a residential, for a residential, for a residential project as we have for the Barcino with the hotel. So I'm looking forward to eventually moving forward with this. So tonight, there are some members from Healthy Building here that'll be making a presentation. Bob Massaro is the principal for Healthy Building. Sarah Rosenthal is a principal, and she'll also will be the lead gold consultant as the project moves forward. Elizabeth Alcott is one of the principals for Healthy Building here tonight. Lori Kegwin-Carry is our landscape architect. She's here this evening and may be able to speak tonight, or we'll definitely spend some more time, hopefully, within the future, reviewing landscape and lighting and all the other issues for this project. My brother Brian is here tonight, and my wife Peggy. So Bob's going to start the presentation. Thank you very much again for an opportunity to move forward with this project, and I'm looking forward to your comments tonight, so thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Bob Massaro with Healthy Buildings. Before we get into the presentation, I wanted to, first of all, thank staff, Steve Rogers, Bob Tierney, Sanders Smith, they've been extremely helpful. This has been a difficult project for a lot of reasons, we'll touch upon those slightly tonight, but, but they, they've been extremely instrumental in helping us get through some of this. And if there was any doubt that Tierney is an Irish name, I am absolutely sure that it is. Okay, with that, we're on version four. Actually, this is version four, part one, because we made some modifications since ZDRB. We, this is a residential project, Yountville Crossroads, the Knight family property. We have just touched upon the fact that this is a lead gold building. It's also a grid-neutral building, which means it's zero energy. It will not, the net usage of energy over the course of a year will be zero. So it's a very important project, we'll talk about that a little bit also. Bob, can I control this, or do you, do you have to do it?
Either way, you want to do it.
Well, that'd be, actually, be, thank you very much. A quick comparison, the chronologue of events, in 2006, we came forward, the general plan allows for 13 to 18 units for this particular property, it's very unusual. We came forward with a project that was 18 lots, 22 dwelling units, subsequently came back with another one, subsequently came back with another one, and now we're at this one. This one, we're, I think, I, I know for sure is the best solution that, that a large team can come up with, and, and hopefully you'll agree with that. So we're on version four from 2006 to 2009. Next slide. A quick project overview, Bob gave it, but I wanted to just talk about it. We're approximately two acres, it's a mixed residential zone. The FAR is .35. Because of the density bonus, we're allowed .4, so we're below that. The density is 16 homes, eight units per acre. There's different floor plans, we'll show you a little bit about the architecture, though that is not the main focus tonight, but you can see the different mixes and the different house sizes. Some of them are one-story, some of them are two-story. 58% are one-story, and 25% are affordable. There's six different floor plans. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view. Google didn't exist in, in 2006, but it does now, so we, or at least their aerial part didn't. You can see across the street, there's actually a new house there that wasn't there when this image was taken. That's a two-story house, there's three other two-story houses across the street, but this is the existing. This is our proposed usage. The darker colors are one-story homes, the lighter colors are two-story homes. Next slide. This is an important slide, because this talks about, you know, you squeeze the balloon in one side, something else pops out. The reason we've been here four times is because of the nature of this lot. The black areas are areas that we cannot build on. We cannot build because of this easement that, at one time in the past, the Knight family granted, we cannot build on this easement because of one time the Knight family granted. Then we have various setbacks. Then we have some drainage issues back here, and the Heritage Oaks. So what we tried to, to do here was meet as many of, as the city's zoning and design ordinances as possible, but do it within this type of configuration, which was a challenge in, I think we're there. Next slide, please. These are the site challenges, it's even written in the general plan, there's a specific designation for this lot. It talks about the awkward configuration, it talks about the sewer easement, and the storm drain, and the heritage trees. There's been some neighborhood, neighbor resistance to the affordables fronting on Stagsview, and there's been some design challenges associated with meeting all of the zoning and the design ordinance. Next slide. This is the site plan in 2008. The most significant difference was we had a flag lot here and some affordable units, and we tucked in another lot over here and some affordable units, and we just, at the time, we thought this was good, but it wasn't, we, we've excelled past that point, but this is the last version that you've seen. Next slide. 2009, which is where we are today, these are the site plan for the first lots. This is a one-story. At ZDRB, this was originally a two-story. We, we talked about the massing component, we, and we, and that was a very important point. So we've cut this to a, to a one-story, and one of the, the unique features here is, yes, that is a garage with a living space above it, but what we've done here, and you can see it in one of the further pictures, this garage actually, this driveway actually drops down four feet. So you're driving off the road down four feet, so that we've tried to mitigate the height there for the, for the driveway. So we call this a one-and-a-half story, but this is virtually, this is a one-story right there, and then we have essentially half a story above grade there. A two-story, two stories, a series of one-stories. Bob did a good job of going through this. The rest, that's fine, Bob, next one, please. The rest of the lots, 7 and so on, they're fairly large lots, because of the drainage easements and so on that we have in the back here, and for example, we're going to have a large bio-swell back here, and because of the Heritage Oaks. Now, out of ZDRB, that we talked about mitigation of three-to-one, and Councilmember Muller just asked that question, we've actually got a design plan that now has a substitution of five-to-one. So we're putting in five 24-inch box trees for the two, oak trees for, oh, but, but substitutes for the two that we're taking out. But the rest of them, we're keeping, and we have plans to protect them during construction and so on. One of the lead components of this project that I'll talk about later on is to protect the site. You have to have a sustainable site. We hope we've achieved that. Next slide. This is the landscape plan, Lori's done an excellent job of moving with us, in terms of as the designs move, Lori's done a great job, I think, of, of factoring in all the design elements, incorporating the Heritage Oaks. Lori is here if you have questions of the landscape plan, but you can see the Heritage Oaks, you can see all of the planting along here. Now, what we've done here is, in the backyards, it's, this is an important point, is it's not shown as landscape, because part of the construction would not landscape this. However, there will be three different landscape plans that the buyers have to pick from. So we don't want to just allow them to either not landscape their backyard, or landscape it poorly, we want to keep the standards high, because it does front the, the vineyard, and we did want to keep it. So, so when they buy it, they'll have to pick from one of three different landscape plans that's part of Lori's master plan. And when we get back later on to the next presentation to talk about the design, you'll see more details about the, the landscape features in the back and so on. Bob, if you can go back two slides for a second, I wanted to, one more. I wanted to address something about the tandem parking, because this was an important question. Throughout the course of the discussion, the iterations of this project, we've talked about the fact that these are the affordable units. We really want to emphasize two things. Number one, the Knight family is going to hold title to these for at least, whatever the, the statute is, 30 years, 50 years, I guess it depends. And they're going to be rented, and they're going to be rented and managed by an agency like Nepa Valley Community Housing, or an agency that deals with this. So part of the rental conditions will be, you have to park in the spaces. You can't park there. Now, guests can park on the road, just as any other, but if you're a tenant, you have to park, it's one of the least restrictions, you have to park in those tandem spaces. So we've managed to exert some control by keeping those rental units. Forward two, please, Bob. And one more. Okay, so this, this shows us where we were in 2008 and where we are now. And I think the important thing here, as far as FAR, we now comply. We're at .35, we're, we're allowed .4 because of the, the affordable component. Lot size, that particular lot now complies. All buildings comply with the lot line setbacks. All buildings comply with the building height. Previously, we did not have all of our buildings comply, these all do. Next slide, thank you. One more. As far as the building width, all of the buildings comply. As far as the setbacks, they do. As far as the curb cuts, they do. As far as the driveway whiffs, they do, and as far as parking, they do. So my analogy of squeezing the balloon, we squeezed this balloon a lot to get to the point where we've got this much compliance. Next slide. The two things that where we don't comply and we're asking for exemptions are, as Bob said, seven of the 12 lots exceed 6,500 square feet, and two of the garages encroach into the 20-foot yard setback. The fact that we've got the exemptions down, I think we're at 12 the first time we came through here, and we're down to two, which we think are the best solution, in other words, we think they're the best trade-offs that are, that we can do. Next slide here. This one shows the garages, and you can see that, that we're still, there's still a large yard here, and we, we are encroaching, but what we've done there is we've, we've changed that, we've made that elevation more interesting, and we've maintained the street frontage to make them deeper driveways. Which, by the way, all of these driveways are not concrete, they're pervious pavement. One of the things associated with lead construction is, we're going to have either green driveways or cobblestone driveways. Barcino, for example, has a pervious pavement driveway. Next slide. These are the street elevations, and we have some colored ones, these are black and white. This shows, we're now looking, we're standing in Yountville Crossroad, like in the vineyards across the street, looking at them. So you can see the one-and-a-half story unit right there on the corner, the two-story next to it, that would be lot number three, and then the two-story, the duplex, that is in, in the back in lot number two, the affordable unit. And what we've done here is we've gone some, with some very authentic craftsman details, and you can see those as we get farther in. Next one, Bob. This is the street elevation, and I actually want to give you something. This is a, this is a blow-up of that. And this is actually placed on the lot photorealistically. So if you can look at that telephone pole right there, that house, this is, and actually, right there is the roof of the existing house. So, so this is photorealistic. This is lot one with its, you notice how its driveway is below grade? That's because it drops down. All the rest of the driveways are on grade. So we're looking at lot one, lot two, three, four, five, and so on. This is the street elevation. Next slide, please. This is something that we did to show line of sight. And what we wanted to do here is, from the neighbor's viewpoint, and you have a blow-up of this. As a matter of fact, there's a couple of neighbors here, if we can give those, if they live on across the street, we have a couple of extras for them also. We actually generated this yesterday, so we didn't get a chance to get it to everybody. That red line is the line of sight from the second floor of the houses across the street. Okay, so we looked at the grades, we looked at the heights, and that's actually at five feet. So if somebody's taller or shorter than five feet. But if you're five feet standing on the second floor, you will see for, if you're standing across the house, the street from this house, you'll, that much of the house will obstruct the view beyond. But the rest of this, you can see the view corridors, and more importantly, you can see a lot of the hills still beyond these houses. Now, interestingly, most of the really beauty here is this way. It's north. It's across, it's across the side. So we wanted to demonstrate the fact that these houses, even the two-story ones, are still allowing a lot of the view to come through. Next slide, please. These show just some samples of the architecture, and we are kind of true believers. In, in the wine industry, it's terroir, which is, you know, you take the earth and you bring it all the way through the wine. In architecture, it's you stick with the genre. So what we've done here is we try to make the homes as true craftsmen as possible, and there's some very significant architectural details that are in here, as far as the stonework, the brickwork, the columns, the corbels, the divided lights. All of these are very traditional craftsmen. And when we come back for colors and materials later, we'll be able to see this in more detail. But we wanted to show you the flavor. Next slide, please. This is a different view, a little farther down. So this would be the two-story, this would be the one-story on the corner. And by the way, these are considered true craftsman colors. They're not pastels and lighter colors, they're the darker colors of true craftsmen. Next slide, please. This is kind of our passion. This is why healthy buildings is on this project. This is why the Knights came to us in the first place. LEED for homes, gold. And what we've done here, we're taking seven projects right now through, through LEED, and this is the LEED for homes one, and this one is targeted for LEED gold. Innovation and Design, Integrated Project Planning. In other words, we're working with all the consultants from the beginning to make this project green. Quality Management for Durability. Durability is a component having to do with the materials, having to do with water retention, all sorts of things. Location and Linkages, as far as how the site was selected. It was previously developed, so we're improving a previously developed site. It has existing infrastructure, sewage, and so on. Sustainable Sites, we're managing stormwater with bio swales, with gray water management. Tree Preservation, we've demonstrated how we're doing that to the oaks, erosion control. Reduced Heat Island Effect. In other words, we're not going to have asphalt driveways. We're going to have lighter stuff that meets the LEED standards for reflection and so on. Next slide, please. Water Efficiency, Water Efficient Landscape. Interior Fixtures in terms of light pollution. The lights, interior lights, for example, will shine down, so even if the windows are open, the lights aren't going to go out. That's a LEED point. LEED for homes is fairly tough. Excuse me, that's water efficiency. I'm talking about lighting efficiency. Water efficiency has to do with the types of toilets and sinks and so on. Rainwater capture and gray water capture, those systems will be in these residences. Energy and Atmosphere, Energy or Star Appliances. On-site Renewable Energy. One of the ways we're going to be, achieve zero energy is, the main way you do it is by energy efficiency and renewable energy. So these will be solar powered, the homes will be solar powered. We talked about materials and resources, the fact that there's a high recycled content in, in these buildings, in steel. We're building one right now in Yountville, excuse me, in St. Helena that's getting a lot of publicity. Construction Waste Management, we just demolished a project and diverted 99.2% of the waste. We're quite pleased with that. Environmental Preferable Products, rapidly renewable cork bamboo renews, reused and recycled. So, next slide. Indoor Air Quality, you know, you, I'm sure you've heard these things before, you're going to hear more about it. I'm pleased to hear that Yountville is moving forward with a, with a green building ordinance. Staff will, will bring you onboard with that. I've asked two speakers to come forward in the public comment. One is Jerry Gill, who's the CEO of Sustainable Napa County. She'll make some comments about, from Sustainable Napa County's viewpoint. And Ellen Elson, who's a board member of United States Green Building Council, she's also here tonight to make some comments about the project. So you'll hear more about that. Homeowner Education, when the people come onboard, they're going to understand that they're in a very unique and different project. And Community Education, one of the things we would like to do with this project is actually make it a community venue where, where the public can come through during various times and actually see the construction. I've had building officials come through, I've had public officials come through, but in this project, the public will be invited during construction to kind of see as things go on. Next slide, please. Energy Efficiency Plus Renewable Energy is Grid Neutral, and that's the new term. It used to be called Net Zero Energy. Now it's called Grid Neutral. In other words, PG&E will provide power during the rainy season and so on, but during, during the solar days, it will go the other way, and solar, these buildings will provide power to PG&E. We just finished a project in Napa, the Gasser Building, and we are pleased to see that that one is producing the energy that we projected. So, one of the things that, we talked so much about density and where those affordables go and, and how many stories they are. This is a really important project, and as a matter of fact, is the slide, did you get this slide in? Next slide, Bob? Uh, no, we didn't get it. We, we wanted to show, there's, there is, we, we went back in 2008 and looked at all the LEED gold houses in California, of which there's somewhere in 90, of which California built approximately 35,000 homes last year. So it's .002% of the homes in California meet this standard. So, so just as Yountville's becoming known for its, well, obviously has been known for years for its restaurants and for its wine clientele and wine environment and so on, now Bardasono comes in and elevates the standard of hospitality and commercial construction. This project will do the same with residential construction. And we're not doing anything like this anywhere else. So I really wanted to, it was interesting to hear the compliments and the, in the comments about Yountville and what you're doing for the community, but this project will elevate green residential construction to the next level. So we're very pleased with that. So I think the next slide says Q and A. So if you have any questions of me, I will be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Bob. Does Council have any questions for Bob at this time?
I have two questions. One, can you do the overall site plan, Mr. Tiernan? Is there going to be fencing on the site at all? I mean, one of my questions really goes to those affordable units. Go back to parking, what's going to, when you have residents and guests, are they going to walk through those yards?
There's going to be fencing. And, and part of the thing we haven't worked through is the details of the fencing. We don't want it to just look like fencing. We want it to somehow be entwined with landscaping, or it could be shrub barricades or something. But the fencing is going to do a couple of things. It's going to provide privacy, and it's going to provide separation.
Will that be for all the properties?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And my second one is, you made a reference to the fact that the Knight family's going to keep title to those affordable units. Have, is there not an agency yet selected or determined who's going to manage those?
It would probably, the answer to that question is no, but there's several available that will do it.
I understand.
I mean, Napa Valley Community Housing, for example, is very active in Yountville. That would be the logical choice. It would be somebody who knows the valley, knows the affordable housing standards and the Knight family and us are comfortable with.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Masaro? Phil?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Very good.
Anyone else? Do you have any other representatives on behalf of the applicant?
Mayor, just briefly, in terms of lot two with the affordable, the current requirement with our four affordable, is there, the current requirement is 25% need to be two-bedroom. So in four, this plan shows basically, it's the two, in the duplexes, there's two or one two-bedroom in each, in each duplex, and then the other units are one-bedroom. And certainly my intent in terms of a concern about traffic and is that the, our, our housing agreement with the town would designate it at least, minimal one-two bedroom. And if it's two-two bedroom, but, you know, so we're talking about two-two bedroom, two-one bedroom. And I think that goes to hopefully helping resolve some of the issues in terms of parking and all that, is keeping the, the population, the number of units, and then potentially the number of people renting there to the standards the town wants in the, in our housing agreement with you. And it, I mean, that's down the road a little bit, but it's the next thing. I definitely want to work with you and with staff to be sure you're satisfied with that housing agreement, so, thank you.
Thank you. So anyone from the public that wished comment on this application this evening?
Sure, I'll be the first. I am Jerry Gill. I'm the CEO of Sustainable Napa County, and I'll tell you a little bit about our organization in a minute, but I wanted to go back to your conversation earlier about the bike path from a newbie to riding around the valley. Would you do me a favor and make the asphalt padded? So when I fall down, it doesn't really show, because I've had some trouble there. So just to let the record reflect that, I remember requesting some padding on the pavement. It's expensive. Oh, okay. So we've already tried that route? All right. So a little bit about Sustainable Napa County. We are a nonprofit organization bringing together all sorts of stakeholders throughout the valley to measurably improve our conditions here and where we live. And of course, they're not so bad as we speak, but we are dedicated to taking action for economic, environmental, and social equity, and all those three key pieces of sustainability. Some of our key goals, we have five, and one is to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions to meet or exceed our state goals. You are all in NCTPA, so you're very, very aware, sometimes painfully so. Increasing our use of locally generated renewable energy, decreasing our fossil fuel use and approving, improving our energy security. Informing our leaders, our communities, and our visitors about climate protection and sustainability, so they will be inspired to act. Enriching our county's competitive economic advantage and position, and also improving the stability and prosperity for our nonprofit community. So that's a little bit about what Sustainable Napa County does and why I'm here this evening, specifically to talk about high-performance building in general and some of the research that our organization has done in helping other jurisdictions in the county looking into high-performance building. We learned a lot of interesting things, and this is a really great example of some of the things that we learned while we were doing our research and all the things that are going on with this industry. The economic and environmental impact of buildings is long and lasting, typically 75 to 100 years. And considering that they consume 40% of our gross energy for the construction and also the operation, obviously, energy is a big component, and they are also the second largest contributor of greenhouse gas emissions. High-performance buildings have many important beneficial effects, including energy, water, natural gas conservation, and reduction of waste generation. Little bit more specifically, the economics makes sense. It's not just about the environment. One of the things we like to talk about with sustainability is it's the environment, but it's also the economics and the community piece. So the economics makes sense, and we learned that energy and material costs obviously are continuing to rise, we all know that. And requiring that we create and renew buildings, and they renew, and they actually don't contribute as much to our greenhouse gas emissions, we are learning that that is a huge piece of what we can do to help. High-performance buildings also show a very high return on investment over their life. Buildings on average yield close to a 35% reduction in energy use over their life and reduce air pollutant emissions by an average of 36%. And one of the things that we didn't realize and we learned again in our research is that Napa County has the second highest incidence of asthma in the state of California. And so improving indoor air quality where we spend most of our lives, 90% of our time is spent in buildings, the healthier they can be, the better our community is. Again, high-performance buildings advance the cause of greenhouse gas emission reductions, and this can be achieved obviously through design and construction, as well as the operation of those buildings and the waste reduction that goes on after they're built. This is an excellent way for the town of Yountville to continue to show its sustained leadership in this regard. And Bob mentioned a few of the projects that have come to light here in, in the town, and I think the entire valley is very proud of what it is that you're doing here. A little bit more specifically, too, this is, talking about LEED in general, LEED buildings reduce energy use by 30% compared to conventional structures. They, again, reduce air pollutant emissions, and they also substantially exceed the conventional waste diversion. So we're learning more about what our goals are in the AB 32, the state law about waste diversion, and we're going to be expected to divert a lot more of our waste. We talk again about the three E's of sustainability and going back to our overall mission in environmental, economic, and social equity. But one of the other key pieces of, of this project and those like them is a fourth E that we like to talk about, and that is education. This is a wonderful opportunity to educate visitors and our community about the exciting prospects for energy conservation and energy efficiency and demand reduction. But it's a, it's a great teaching opportunity for the residents, and it really does suit nicely, I think, where our valley is headed with respect to sustainability. So as a nonprofit organization, we are precluded from taking a position on a specific project, and we don't do that. But what I do want to say is that I am here tonight to applaud the developers for going through this trial and error process, and also to, again, applaud the town of Yountville for your leadership in this area of sustainability. Again, the entire community is watching you, and our valley is very proud of what you are doing. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I am Ellen Elson, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the U.S. Green Building Council, Redwood Empire Chapter, and I'm a homeowner here in Napa. My husband and I are building the first registered certified home in Napa County, and we are targeted to obtain a platinum certification from the U.S. Green Building Council. We have found that the many advantages of building a green home far outweighed any challenges or extra costs that we have incurred in this project. Building green is a convergence of three fundamental objectives: conserving natural resources, increasing energy efficiency, and improving indoor air quality. The energy savings, rebates, and tax incentives will offset most of the added cost of this project. We feel that building green is a community responsibility, and it's just being a good citizen. Thank you for the opportunity to address, to address you tonight in support of the proposed Vineyard Oaks project. The citizens and community of Yountville will be the better for supporting this green project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else comment on this application this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Sharon Stensis. I live at 1 Stags View Lane, and I'm speaking to you tonight as a citizen and a homeowner, and not in any other capacity. I was here, I believe it was about three years ago when the project first came before you. It has improved enormously, in my opinion, since then. We've had great cooperation and communication with Eric Knight about the project, and certainly appreciate the change in the height of the building on lot one, which is directly across from my home at 1 Stags View Lane, from two stories to one and a half stories. However, I still believe there is too much massing at the north end of the lot or the property here. We've gone from four two-story buildings to three two-story buildings and one one-and-a-half story building. There's still two encroachments at that end of the development, and as one of the councilors mentioned, tandem parking can be a headache to some residents. From my personal viewpoint, I feel that the residents at that end of Stags View Lane are giving up some of our cherished viewscape. We are inheriting more We are inheriting more than our fair share of additional noise and traffic associated with the high density of use proposed there. Certainly not opposed to affordable housing. In fact, there's affordable housing in our backyard. We've enjoyed the neighbors there, and we hope they've enjoyed us for the last eleven years. We've seen two little boys grow up to be youths and young men, and we've celebrated with them on some of the special occasions in their lives. So, earlier today, Eric came by and showed me an option. It is mentioned in your staff report. It was not mentioned tonight, and I'm not sure why, but it proposes on Lot Two, where there's the two duplexes, a one-story triplex, still all affordable units, which I feel would be an excellent compromise position. It would cut down on the density. It preserves a little bit more of our viewscape, and it provides a better, what I would call a better entrance to the town of Yountville, and a more traditional look to the outskirts of a town. Traditionally, the model for urban development is that the less dense development takes place on the edges of the town. And so, I think by scaling the affordable down to a one-story triplex, the entrance of the town would be feathered, and it would appear to be one large home rather than two small duplexes. So, I don't know why that wasn't brought up tonight, but it is in your staff report, and I'd encourage you to consider that, and maybe ask the applicant to bring that back as something that you can look at another time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Comment on this application this evening? Design concept preliminary lead, master development plan. Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring it back to council for further discussion, questions, clarifications, decisions. Does council wish to see an alternate plan?
If the applicant would like to, I have reviewed it in the staff report. If the applicant would like to make an argument in favor of it, they can do that, but I don't know that we need to do that.
I read it, too.
Yeah, I read it. I didn't interpret it as a triplex. I just interpreted it as the one unit being reduced to a single story, still detached. It would be two-story, one, two-story, and one-story, as I read it in the staff report, not three single levels. I don't know.
May I make a comment?
Certainly.
We did look at an option. We felt that the proposal that we presented was the best solution and did provide for the most affordable units. The alternative was a single-story triplex, so there would be three units there. That's what's written in the staff report. The problem with that is it triggers a whole chain reaction of other things, going back to FARs and so on, and additional exemptions. So, we're prepared to discuss it and talk about what the other exemptions would be required if you were interested in a triplex there in lieu of, but we prefer the proposal that we presented, and I think staff does also.
Well, I can, I don't mind telling what my concern with that proposal is. First of all, I appreciate the proposal. One thing that I have written here that I want to say is, the last time this came to the council, which I believe was in 2007, the plan did look very different, and there was, forget about the plethora of exceptions asked for, the way the affordable housing was treated in the middle of the project with almost not even tandem parking, something One of the big concerns was applicants said, "We really want this to be good for the neighborhood," but it didn't seem like the neighbors felt like they had been listened to. So, the good thing is that clearly has changed dramatically over the last year and a half, and I think that's commendable. So, that affordable housing was always an issue. So, the second one is, I think they're listening to comment of, "We don't want two-story buildings back there." My issue from a town and as a counselor is, if we were to scale this back from four units to three units, yet leave all the FAR bonuses in place, I personally believe that really sets a poor precedent for any other project that would come forward in town, which would almost set up the situation of, "I'm going to put forward a project, I'm going to put lots of things in there that people don't like, and then I'm going to go say, 'Well, I'll make it better for you, as long as you reduce some of this affordable housing.'" And I don't think that's an appropriate thing for the council to do. I do believe that the plan has improved greatly. The only way that I believe that we should consider that is they went from four to three on this property is where, what a fourth one go, I don't see it on this parcel, and I don't know if there's a, you know, if there's some sort of cost savings from putting it down to one building, and there could be some in-lu fees, but something has to be done to say, "We were going to build four units, and we're going to make sure that in some substitution that that would occur." That would be good for the residents, as one of the residents said, but I think that the integrity of saying four affordable units to get your density bonus up to, or your FAR bonus up to forty percent needs to be preserved. I think that's my thought on that one issue.
Have you finished?
One issue.
Okay, on that one issue. Anyone else? Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I have my overall.
With respect to the second plan, reducing the affordable housing, number of affordable housing units or the massing at the north end?
On that particular issue, I would love to go with some in-lu fees. I thought about that a lot, but we don't have much to build that other house on, any other land around, so I'm open to considering that, but it's, I think that's a really tough one. Also, on that fourth unit, if we do go that way, I'd like to see it moderate income. I think our poor middle class is kind of forgotten, so that's my recommendation for, if we do have a fourth unit, that it be considered moderate.
Okay, there's already a moderate in the mix, so you want two moderates and two lows?
All the people I know that, unfortunately, they can't qualify for all this stuff that live in, that, you know, work here, they just are always missing out, so I'm speaking for the moderates.
Right, okay. Councilmember Dutton?
Yeah, I understand what it does, the triggering event here, it's certainly evident. I do feel that lots one and then three through sixteen or thirteen are fine. I think the whole discussion is Lot Two, and then it becomes, is it three or four? I really don't have a problem, if you went to three, with leaving the exceptions the way they are. I, you know, this lot, as it said, is strictly a problem thing. I think personally you've come up with the best thing I've seen on this yet, and this is my four-point-oh version. So, I'm really open on that. I mean, whether it's three or four, definitely went to three, I'd say two very low and one I really don't know on that. I see Sharon's comments about the massing at the end, I mean, when you do have three out of four units there coming into town. I don't come into town that much, so I probably would never see them, but in any event, it does do something there. But, again, with the four units, it does sort of put the FAR, the two exceptions with four units in my feeling are minimal. I mean, six feet is nothing. The lot sizes, as you had indicated, with the ballooning effect, you really can't do much with some of them anyway, so I'm sort of on the fence with that one. I really, either way, it doesn't matter to me. I'm just saying, keep the other lots exactly like they are.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I just, well, and again, I would, you know, I appreciate, you know, the people listening, not only the staff, the ZDRB, the council, but I think the one thing here, and I think appreciation really should go, is we've talked an awful lot to the greening effect. I mean, I think from the get-go, Mr. Knight's passion was this was going to be a green project, and he didn't deviate one single bit from that, and I take my hat off to him for that, because you are certainly on the leading edge, and it, obviously, I think is going to come to fruition, and, obviously, it'll be something that the town can hold itself up along with yourself, you know, as a real forerunner onto building, so I appreciate that very much.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Chilton?
Couple of other issues. First of all, again, going way back, thank you for dropping the farmhouse look. I don't know what it was, back in 1997, something in the water, every applicant that came here thought Yountville needs farmhouse looks. We don't have it. I'm glad that craftsmen, I think it fits in a lot better, so I consider that to be good. Again, you've engaged the neighbors in a real way, and you should be commended for that. The significant reduction in exceptions, I think that the existing exceptions are reasonable in terms of lot size, those two garages. This is a challenging site. I think the former plan was, and maybe this is why you changed architects, it's your business, but the number of exceptions was ridiculous, and I think everybody knew that. It probably cost the Knights some money to go back and change that, but that's what happens. I do want to commend you, I was at the ZDRB meeting where it was discussed about Lot One, with taking that down to one story. That's happened since then, and that should be commended. I don't know for approving the winding sidewalk, I've never understood it, but I don't want to get into inane details on that. And then the last one is, is the affordable housing. I, you know, I share the concerns about the entrance to town. You know, you are entering a town, we're a very, very compact, dense town in the middle of vineyards. I think the reason we're not going to have a really good transition from the agricultural to the rural is that's Proposition J territory, so you're not going to have anything to transition like you might in a normal, small town out in the Midwest. So, I think it's, I think it's one of the unique things of Yountville that's probably necessary. Again, I stated before, I would support, I think it's a positive, to take that down to three units, but only if there's some sort of mitigating factor. We just had a hundred thousand dollar overrun on another affordable housing project. I wouldn't mind seeing that amount covered if that was feasible, so that would be a reasonable trade-off. I'm just throwing that out, but otherwise, unless there's something reasonable to mitigate that with, I don't think it should be done purely out of exception. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
My first comment is, I really like arts and crafts architecture as well, so thank you for that. When I was going through all the documents, I, to make my decisions, I looked at section seven-point-four-point-F that says, "The council shall make the following findings," and I'll go through these very, very briefly, I promise. Number one says, "Each development creates sustained and desirable stability." I think, without a doubt, we've heard quite a bit about that tonight, so that's a checkmark. "Design consistent with the general plan and design guidelines." Yes, in terms of housing density, housing opportunity, and the town character, with the two exceptions, which I am fine with both exceptions, especially since we're making bigger lots, not smaller lots, and also with the rear yard is just pretty minor, like Councilmember Dutton said, you know, we're just talking about six feet, so I don't have a problem with that. Three, "Development maintains its existing character of Yountville." I think that the housing is generally consistent with immediate neighborhoods and also some surrounding neighborhoods, and I do acknowledge that the neighbors did have a concern, and it looks like you've really kind of worked towards addressing that, and I also recognize that the zoning was different across the street than it is for years. So, it's very acceptable in terms of our current general plan and zoning ordinances. Number four is, "Utilities are adequate." I wasn't sure if I understood all the zero-energy stuff, but I think you explained that very well, and no problem there. "Streets are suitable and adequate, won't overload the network." I think going down to the minimum lots really helped there, and the bulb out, I think, also helps slow down the traffic, so that's good, takes care of that one. "Preserving the healthy trees." We touched on that briefly, and I think that'll be more defined in the final plan, so I'm okay with what you're talking about now with the concept for preserving the healthy trees, and then we can talk in more detail about the trees you're taking out. "Maintaining open space." I had a lot of comments here, I just kind of forgot that backyards are open space, so no problem there. And the large lot size, and I guess these easements, too, are, they're considered view corridors as well? Okay, so that kind of addresses that. Number eight, "Mix of housing types and lot sizes." Certainly got that one. "Mitigating environmental hazards." We talked about that in the sequel report that's coming up. Then, looking at all the provisions in Article Six, did all that. Eleven, "Commercial is not applicable." Bike path, there's no bike path, we talked about that at someplace else. Development's consistent with affordable housing. I kind of prefer four, but I'm certainly open to any kind of in-lu fees as well, and the site plan's integrated, coherent, reinforced to town. I certainly agree with that as well. So, in conclusion, I think there's been a lot of work, certainly done by Eric and changing architects and Bob and the planning department, so I just really know everyone's put a lot of work in, including the ZDRB, so thanks to everybody.
Thank you for your comments.
For the council's consideration, if you were to consider the three versus four option, one of the things that we could do is we could enter into a development agreement for this site, outlining things, and work on the mechanism for mitigation for the fourth unit. So, there is a vehicle that, I believe, could address Councilmember Chilton's concern about somebody attempting to use the process inappropriately, and if the development team was interested, I think that could be a way that would allow us to move forward with a decision on your design, and then work with them to incorporate a development agreement that references the plans and the commitments made today and address that, if that is something that the council was to consider.
I think we'd like to present the other option, with the idea that there's some mitigation negotiated in lieu of the fourth unit. There's certain advantages, but Mr. Dutton's point is the important one. He'll have to grant us the exemptions, so in other words, I'm going to ask Sarah Rosenthal, who's my associate, to talk, to take us through three more slides that show you what that alternative is, and to just talk about how the balloon gets squeezed and these other, or maybe you don't want to.
No, no, Bob, what I wanted to point out for the community, what I want to point out for, that is one of the values that using a development agreement would allow the council to do, is you would be able to make the findings and identify all the other things that you've identified are acceptable, and address the change in one, basically, the one lot only from four to three. It's a vehicle for us to do that, so I think probably showing your proposal is appropriate at this point in time.
Madam Mayor, is that okay?
Sure. Okay. Oh, okay, so go to the end?
I will get through this briefly, but I'm Sarah Rosenthal with Healthy Buildings. Can you, yeah, go up, actually, Bob, back. Right there, yep, right there. So, you can see here, this is the area we're talking about. So, Lot One and Lot Three stay as is, but Lot Two becomes the one-story triplex, and then the tandem parking moves over to the south side of that lot. So, that gives you a site plan view of this alternate configuration here. Can you see the next slide, please? So, this is actually a view from the, looking from the north, headed east of, this is Lot One here with the one-and-a-half story, and this is actually the triplex lot right here. So, you can see what this would look like, again, in the alternate, the alternate view. Next slide, please. What we want to bring to your attention is the fact that there are some trade-offs associated with this particular configuration. So, it would require an additional exception, or actually a trade-off of exception. So, the exception now is no longer an exception that we have greater than twenty-five percent of the single-family. that we have greater than 25% of the single-family lots, greater than 6,500 square feet. That exception actually goes away, but it is replaced by an exception that we would have to have, rather than the allowable FAR in the situation being 25%, the exception would be that the allowable FAR would be 40%. Additionally, the project simply has one less affordable unit, period. So the town of Yountville has one less affordable unit. In the staff report, it does address the fact that if we went to three units, perhaps there would be then a modification, that there would be two very low units and one low unit to try to compensate for fewer affordable units. You do also reduce the green space in this configuration, because now you have one larger building that is spread out over a wider space. You also have the possible addition of a granny unit on the site, and that's to reach the 25% multifamily requirement. So that granny unit would get put someplace, if we, if we were required to stick to the 25% multifamily unit, the granny unit would get put someplace on Stags View Lane, which again is now going to impact the neighbors across the street in terms of their view corridor, and sort of the perceived density there. So this is just an example of, we achieve some goals potentially by putting the triplex there, but we have other consequences associated with it. So that's, that's just in summary and overview. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them about this potential plan.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for the applicant?
I don't.
Councilmember Dutton, any questions?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
I had.
I'll reopen, I'll reopen the public hearing since we've been presented with a new concept. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on the new concept? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for further discussion. Bob, do you have a comment?
Well, there was one, a couple of things that came out of that, and one of them was, when you, when you go to the three units, then, of course, the FAR, we've already talked about that, and we also reduced the amount of multiple units. 25% of the projects are supposed to be, required to be multiple units, so we would be going against that one as well. One of the things that, the granny unit, and this triplex model has the parking towards the end, and just keep that in mind. One thing I was, that was brought up while I go to this other plan, was that on all of these, the potential for a second unit, I'll get to this, there. These are all five-foot yards, essentially, except for where the 15-foot wide sewer easements exist. And because of that, the idea of having a second unit in any one of these other houses would have a parking implication that would be on the street or in the driveway. Now they are allowed with the council's acceptance, tandem space on one of these. With this configuration, that they proposed the trilex up in this area with the parking towards the rear, it is possible on this lot to put a detached second unit with a parking space that's access down an easement, that would use the same easement to access the rear parking area here, and then have a parking area with a second unit at this one. That second unit could either be controlled as far as a affordable unit and through the housing authority, or generally speaking, the second units that are market fall into the moderate category anyway. So there's a couple options there. They also mentioned the potential of going to the three affordable units, that they would, there'd be room for negotiation there of how the mix of very low and low would, would come out. The thing to remember on affordable units is very low units are, unless they're subsidized in some way, impossible to get otherwise.
Thank you. Councilmember Chilton?
So my suggestion really is, I understand the exceptions. What I'm trying to do is what I would call mitigate that exception. Almost to the point where I feel like it's reasonable to say we're not making an exception and doing all of this. I don't want, I completely agree with Councilmember Dutton. I don't want to change Lots One and Three through, whatever. I think that should stay the same as it is. A triplex is, one story, I think is a better solution for the project. But I want to be able to reasonably say that we required four affordable housing units, and that was three plus an in lieu in some manner. That's a fair and equitable solution. So the talk about the granny units, talk about all the exceptions for FAR, in my opinion, that, that would be erased, if you can say that reasonably there's been an accommodation made, that this is better for Yountville, and there's been, if it's an in lieu payment made. Now, I'm glad you returned, Amy. If, in this situation, if we say we're going to put a triplex in, and then provide for some sort of in lieu affordable housing unit, if it's just, let's just say it's cash, we don't put a granny unit on, there's no fourth unit on this property, is that, is that reasonable for us to do that if some future applicant comes in and says, we want, we want three, three affordable housing units, and we want $150,000 in cash, and that should be four units? I know this is discretionary, I want to make sure this, that's not putting the council in a, or the town in an awkward position.
You're not changing the standards under which everyone else has to operate. There are goals that can be met, for example, by having this separate kind of agreement that says, that says exceptions from these standards, or something like the bonus for these units that are not normally required, but afford the bonus. Some other way to accommodate that is in the best interest of the town, because you want the affordable units and/or the fees paid in exchange for a loosening of the development standards. And so I don't think that, that necessarily sets up a circumstance where you're going to expect that in every case, well, we've made this exception here, that's what's going to happen for future applicants.
So, I mean, my, the bottom line here is, I support the plan as it's drawn right now. I think that we should, we should approve Lots One, Three, and everything else, and say, we're going to go with the four units, and do this agreement that you're talking about, and negotiate, is that four, is that going to be three, and elsewhere, how is that going to work? Can we do that? I mean, I, what I don't want to do is send this back for another three months of...
No, I think your resolution identifies that. What you're saying is you would like...
We have a final to approve.
What you're saying, though, is you're going to be wanting the three-unit proposal treating four as a whole with a fourth in lieu to be determined.
Yeah.
And we will work on the appropriate agreement with the town attorney and the development team to bring that together, if that's your...
But we still reserve the right for a final discussion on that point.
I'm, I lost you on that one.
We can still, we're not making a final decision one way or the other about three or four.
Well, not master agreement. I don't want it to be three units and, you know, here's $10,000.
No, I think you are, because what I'm saying is, what the applicant and the staff needs to know, if you're saying, we're going to treat them as four units, three, you need to tell us whether it's the triplex or two duplexes. What we can do through the development agreement is come up with the equivalency factor for the fourth unit.
But in the end, the council gets to approve whether that's a legitimate equivalency factor.
Yes, you have to approve, you have to approve, in essence, would be a development agreement. That is correct. That, that will come back, as would the final subdivision.
So one more question. So if we don't approve it, does it revert to the fourplex?
Well, I think you need to, if you adopt it...
It's, you're essentially, if I understand Bob's staff report correctly, because as you know, I'm just stepping into this meeting, literally mid-meeting and having reviewed this staff report today, that the difference that you're discussing in the three or four units that you're approving in relation to the exceptions is, and the FAR, is that the subdivision is going to reflect the lot sizes that are resultant from those exceptions. So that's what will not be changing if you approve this tonight.
We would need to, right. The resolution would need to be modified to reflect exactly what you're saying, which is, you basically like what you're seeing on everything. You're willing to consider a three-unit instead of four-unit affordable, and staff needs to work with them on appropriate mitigation. So that would be what your action tonight is, and then we will work on that.
I'd like to pose a question to the architect. With a minor lot line adjustment between Lots One, Lot Two, and Lot Four, would it be possible to make the front unit a single-story unit, and put three units in the back of that lot? They're very small units.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, again, please.
We do, there's, there's two, there's a duplex on the property.
Right.
Make that front unit, a single-story
Yeah.
unit, adjust the lot lines in the back, and put three of the same size or smaller units in the back part of that lot.
We actually looked at that. We looked at the idea of that being a single unit, and then another unit there, and then a two-story there, to get the four. The problem we ran into was the parking. Between the set, it just, it triggered setback issues and parking issues. By, by taking up essentially parking space for another building. So what we thought about was...
I'm looking at the, and I'm looking at the space behind Unit Two.
Right here?
Right. No, not that house.
This one here?
Yes.
Okay.
That space and the space that's behind Lot, on Lot Number Four.
Right here, okay.
Yeah. There's a lot of extra space there, I think, that could be utilized to provide for the fourth unit. If I'm suggesting that you keep the configuration as it is, maybe move it up just a tiny bit towards Yountville Cross, and in that space back there, and including a small portion of the rear yard of Lot Number Four, couldn't you find enough space to cram in a unit and possibly even have a parking space in front of it?
So, so do this kind of lot configuration, where we have a zigzag lot like that?
Yeah, doesn't have to be that dramatic. I mean, you only need a little bit of space. These things are only 700 square feet. I mean, you could do it. That way you put all the two stories behind the two-story, and there's no view corridor that's being blocked, and it transitions nicely from the street to the back of the lot.
Unfortunately, there's no simple answer right now, other than we did look at alternative, we did not, we did not look at an alternative that adjusted that lot line, because we wanted to keep the lots consistent, and, and we just felt that, that this house needed some back lot. Because what's not shown here, well, it is shown here, but not understood, that's a bio-swell right there.
Dark green area.
Yeah, it's all drainage. So this, this house is...
So a granny unit can't be built on it, correct?
Exactly. We can't build anything, we have not only setbacks, but drainage issues. So that is, this house's rear yard, that's a fairly deep swell that goes like this and catches all the drainage. So if we were to try to build anything in here, we're modifying the drainage plan, and I'm not sure exactly where to, where to put that. So we triggered some civil engineering changes, some drainage, drainage. But more importantly, that bio-swell is doing a good thing of cleaning the water before it gets into, into the aquifer and the storm drain system. So I, you know, some of the other things we've talked about here, the triplex and an in lieu, or the two duplexes, don't hurt other issues of the projects. I'm concerned that if we, we try to build on that bio-swell or change the drainage, it's going to trigger, we'll be here six months from now.
How does council wish to proceed?
Well, I mean, really, this is a difficult site, and I totally understand, when you squeeze this, you don't get that. I mean, this seems like the best plan.
Councilmember Chilton?
I think it's reasonable, and I think it would be a better solution to do a development agreement on that, affordable housing units. If we can find a, a good way to make that three and do some mitigation elsewhere, whether it's cash or some other deal, I think that would be the best solution for Yountville. I support that.
Councilmember Dutton?
Yeah, I think that's where I was going originally. I, I would like to see what would come out of that mitigation, you know, with the three units. Also, which hasn't been said, and I, I do think we have an option here, you know, if in fact we did go three and it became two very low and one low, keeping in mind that we gave up some very low housing here just recently, you know, so that would sort of fill that little tank up. And I think as Bob has always said, that's, that's the hardest fill-up to do, is the very low. It's pretty easy to get the other stuff. So I would be in favor of that. Everything else is fine, that lot. Look at what could happen with a triplex as some kind of mitigation. I look forward to seeing what came back in that. The other lots, please don't touch them, it's fine. That's, you worked hard, and you should be commended on that. I think that should, I think that should stay.
Thank you. Well, I didn't really get a chance to comment, but I think it's the best plan you've presented so far. I think it's the best utilization of space. I really like the incorporation of all the green and sustainable features. I saw the fourplex, or the two duplex units, and I, I think it's important that we, that you made a commitment to provide affordable housing, and you're only asking for two very minor exceptions. I could support it either way. I don't want to see a redesign, I don't want to see you back here in six months, but I would like four affordable housing units, either on this site, or definitely a mitigation measure, another unit somewhere, a low-income unit somewhere, perhaps on another site, I don't know. There's got to be a way to figure out how to get four units on that site, or another, at least one unit on another location. That would be my criteria. In lieu fees, I can't support. So that's, that's my, that's my opinion. If there's some way that we can work it out in a development agreement, and find out a way to mitigate the fourth housing unit, I'm comfortable with that.
I need to clarify, because you've said, the possible mitigation may be contribution towards another project, and you've said two different things. So is that, you know, you've said you want a fourth site someplace else, so I'm just...
Well, we're losing a unit here. If we decide to go with a triplex, we're losing a unit. We might gain some cash to support another project in town, but are we gaining another unit?
Not immediately, but you may at a future point in time where that, that asset, just like our Housing Opportunity Fund, has been successful in being able to support other units when they come forward. So I, I think, I, I think we need to keep that option open, because otherwise, what you're telling the applicant is they've got to go buy another parcel and put an affordable unit on it, which, given the amount of space in Yountville, is not a very realistic opportunity. And that's part of our challenge right now, which is why I really think it's important that we secure the affordable housing that we can commit to get. I'm just, that's why I want to make sure I understand what you're, you're saying, because otherwise, what I'm hearing is, we want to treat the approval as with four, approval for four affordable units, of which, three will be met on site with a triplex, one will be a mitigated or in lieu as a part of a development agreement, with the understanding that the balance of the site plan is acceptable as approved tonight. I mean, that's what I'm hearing the council generally say.
Can you support that, Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I can ask you for clarification. If they come back with an agreement that says three plus, you know, in lieu fee, what you just said is you could not support that, is my impression.
I, I need to, I need an assurance of an additional unit, yes.
Somewhere above and beyond what's already scheduled to be built in town.
Well, I...
No, this is scheduled to be built in town. Four units are scheduled to be built in town.
Well, they could say, we're not going to build any, or they could go back to two. That's all they have to do is two. So I'm just asking that question of, we've got 25 units, I mean, we've got a lot of units scheduled to be built in this town, and whether, I'm okay with the idea of our affordable housing fund is getting pretty lean right now, so the future ability to, to use that fund is very low. And so I'm okay with that, but if you're not okay with that, then I, then that's, we should probably know that now. Because they're going to have a very different direction. Because I agree, going out and getting another parcel in town, good luck.
No, I understand that. I just need an assurance that we will not lose that unit. Now, if we're going to get in lieu fees, and I don't know if the applicant is prepared to, to enter into that agreement, and... to, to enter into that agreement and provide in lieu fees, if that's a possibility. Like I said, I like the plan as submitted. That would be my preference. If I can get an assurance that we will get four affordable housing units out of this project, then I can support-
For other reasons, for other projects, we have tried to find a parcel in Yountville that we could build some affordable units. We, I know every parcel in Yountville that is either for sale or has the potential of being for sale. If, if a condition is placed on this project that we have to go find another place to build an affordable unit, I don't think we can do it, and I don't think this project will get built. I think it's important we build affordable units. We would like to see you approve the two duplexes. That gives us four affordable units, zero energy affordable units, which are rare anywhere. If you choose not to approve that, so I want to make it clear that that's our request, if you choose not to approve that, then we'd like you to approve a triplex with a negotiated in lieu fee, or some utter, some other condition that does not include us building that lot. So those are the two alternates that work for us.
And in your opinion, there's no way you can get four affordable units on that parcel?
Madam Mayor, it would, we can do anything. I can build three stories below ground, five stories above ground. It would just mess up the project. And, and I, and I will tell you that we have tried different alternates. We've tried different granny units. We've tried adjusting the lot lines. But if you go back to that envelope I showed you with all the problems with this, the answer is, if we did that, it's going to degrade some other component of the project.
Can I ask another question?
Sure. Councilmember Mueller?
Eric, do you have a preference for leaving the fourplex or putting a triplex in?
Well-
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just thought maybe you had an opinion.
Well, I, I think both plans, you know, I have, you know, all the confidence in the world that with, with, with that, on that lot, whether there are three or four, that we could, we could do, we could build two very good units either way. So there's, there's more open space on this site plan with two duplexes. Again, it would be potentially just one two-bedroom and three one, or, and three one-bedroom as, to reduce, to reduce that. With a triplex, there's, you lose one unit, which means it's one moderate, moderate one. I know you, Councilmember Mueller, you talked about moderate, but I know there's another applicant in town that's advertising a moderate income for another project at, at $1,800 some, a month for a one-bedroom. So if the town lost one moderate, I'm not sure it'd be a great loss if, if you, if you gained possibly an extra very low. And, and I'm happy at some point now, but I don't want to go into tonight to talking with staff. I think, looking, I, I think the exception isn't a great, it doesn't take a big stretch to look at the way the, our housing element consultants created our FAR bonus system back seven or eight years ago. No one's used it. Girardi didn't use it. You're going to go into a new housing element update. No one's using that one. It's defective. It, what we need is, is a modified version between the old housing element and the new housing element. I think we can come to an agreement with staff on that, that provides the needs of the community, helps improve views in the neighborhood and the entrance and, and achieve what the town wants. But I can build a tri, a triplex, and what you're talking about losing is one moderate, moderate rental in town, so.
But you did say it increases, this gives you the most open space.
Well, you saw the plan. I mean, there's obviously, there's more concrete on the ground, so. But I think, I, I feel like what I'm hearing now, I know you spent a lot of time, is that, is that I'm really happy that you're, you're very happy with lots one, three, and four through 12, and that what we're talking about is, well, how do we resolve lot two? And if we leave here tonight with that, and I, I'm, I'm very, very happy. And so I think we can come up with something that will benefit the neighborhood, the town, and so, and I appreciate staff's comments and their, and their help with us getting here so far. So thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Does that answer your question?
It answers my question. I don't know if we're, it's a tough decision.
Yeah, I know. I, I'm just looking at it in terms of the exceptions that are being requested, and the trade-off, and then the concerns of the, the surrounding community. I like the plan as it's presented. I'm willing to approve the plan, lots one through-
One, three, and everything else.
One through 13, with the exception of lot two, and lot two to be determined.
I hate to be the person that reigns on your parade, but because the affordability determination has all the other factors that affect that, I can't let you do that.
It, well, lot two to be determined, whether it's going to be a threeplex or duplex.
Well, hold on. I, I would suggest that I make a motion that approves Resolution Number blah, 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 with the change of putting in a development agreement on parcel number two, to provide for four affordable housing units on-site, or three on-site with appropriate in lieu measures.
And the development agreement only pertains to parcel two?
Parcel two. That's what you suggested, I-
Or the-
It needs to cover, because that is the tool that grants you some of the other exceptions that, right?
Right.
But you're, it would affect the whole subdivision.
Or the FAR, right.
So what was wrong with what I said?
Well, no, what, what, what you said was correct, except that answering the mayor's question was that then it does affect the entire parcel, because you're saying the exceptions-
Of course. Right. We're saying everything else stays in place.
And the development agreement for that purpose, it covers the holes, the whole lots that you're talking about. That's all we're saying on our end over here.
Right.
Because if they come back with a total change, we're going to reject the file anyway.
And that's not what we're attending. We're basically, you're saying the site proposal, but what we're saying is the development agreement will reflect the three plus one, the four, and the site plan that you've seen today.
Were there any other changes to the resolution? Okay, I'll make the resolution. Resolution, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2769-09, approving the preliminary master development plan for the Vineyard Oak subdivision, the night project, at 1901 Yountville Cross Road, with the one change to the resolution as just stated, that we will add a provision for a development agreement related to the affordable housing on-site, four units provided on-site, or three and, and lieu to be determined, or negotiated.
I'd second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take a brief break, five, actually, eight minutes, and we'll reconvene at 9:00 PM.
Louis?
We're going to reconvene. We've got a lot of ground to cover in the next hour. Definitely want to get out of here before they stop serving at Hurley's. Item 10, in council meeting workshop wine tasting room and uses. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you. This is a somewhat of a continuation of a discussion back in May that the council had on the topic of wine tasting rooms and wine tasting uses. The, pointed out in the staff report, and it's a short staff report, but it's, it's to draw attention to the fact that we continue to get interest in any vacant square footage that comes available in the wine tasting use, and expect that trend will continue for some time. So we wanted to renew this conversation about wine tasting room, and we've also somewhat evolved the, the idea, at least that staff and I think the town council has joined in on this line of thinking, where it's not necessarily just wine tasting, it's wine tasting with retail and, and to keep some diversity in our retail offerings going. We still don't really have a definition yet for wine tasting rooms or wine bars. I did update the, the table that shows our inventory of such uses, and what we were hoping maybe to come out of this conversation with is some direction as far as developing some definitions, and perhaps standardizing on some of the elements of every wine tasting room, including special events and food tasting, and pairing with the wine tasting hours of operation, parking in conjunction with special events. Now, some of this, of course, is very much location-dependent on whether they have the ability to have outdoor wine tasting, special events. And also, the tendency is for the applicant to propose the most flexible, from their point of view, scheme of, of operation. And that would mean hours that could go to midnight or whatever, as opposed to going into it with a little more caution and then reviewing it, and at some point, if appropriate, coming back and amending it to, to increase the hours. So that's one thing we've found to be the case, is the applicant, of course, wants as much flexibility going in as possible. So in the staff report are serious questions that are intended to stimulate the conversation on this, and they're, they're starting out with the idea of, is there an upper limit to the number of, of such uses that we want to have in town? And then the idea of separating out wine tasting from wine bars that would be serving by the glass or bottle. Of course, we don't really have any wine bars in the sense that you can, every restaurant we have is in, in essence, a wine bar, because you can do that now, but we don't have exclusively, uses that exclusively offer only wine by the glass or bottle. Under the new ABC regulations, that's been liberalized for wine tasting rooms, and they're allowed to do that. So it's not a restriction, at least from the state, coming on that. It would be a local restriction to keep it wine tasting, which is a one ounce servings. And there's somewhat of, you know, a difference in, in the wine tasting use and experience, which is, tends to be more about the wine and learning about the wine, and educational exposure to different varieties they have, as opposed to, I would say, a wine bar would be more along the lines of a, a social experience where you're, you're with friends or whatever. So you have the questions, and I, I think we can, if you want to start, they're not necessarily in any order, but if you would like to begin the discussion, or have any questions with me.
No, thanks, Bob. And I noticed there's, you, you supplied us with the report, or the, the staff report from the May 6, 2008 meeting, and our conclusions from that meeting, and also the table in the report is very helpful, to just kind of give us a big picture of what's going on in town right now, in terms of hours of operation, special events, whether food's being served, tasting rooms only, mixed juice, and that sort of thing. So, thank you for that.
Are there any questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Chilton?
Amy, I want to ask a question of you. One of my primary concerns about the concept of limiting the number of businesses devoted to a specific use comes to the fact that are we creating, if we said, okay, we're going to have 10 wine tasting rooms in town, and we're not going to approve any more than 10 wine tasting rooms, how are we to find that? Are we creating suddenly a commodity that is now valuable, much like liquor licenses in Napa County, which originally cost $10,000, now costs $300,000? If somebody has a wine room, a wine tasting room may suddenly come into being of having an extremely valuable commodity, forget about the wine tasting or the business itself. Can we, with new applications, can we say that, that this applies to the current owner and cannot be transferred, or some review has to come up? Is that possible?
That, that may be possible. I would have to look into what kind of regulatory scheme you would want to have, you know, under your general police powers to regulate in the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare. There may be some opportunity to say that your regulation, in particular of alcoholic beverages, would include your desire that you don't create a circumstance where, like with, I guess it was Laura Cunningham's restaurant, where she held over, you know, they, what they were transferring was their use permit.
Right.
And you don't want to create a commodity that is a use permit for a tasting room, where you only get 10, and that's it. So I could look into that. I mean, I can't say for certain what the validity of that kind of regulation would be. And this area generally is sort of fraught with a lot of different kinds of legal issues about your ability to regulate something that is regulated in lots of other ways by the federal and state governments. But, you know, could certainly look into that if that's what you wanted to consider.
I, I think there is some challenge, but again, that would be carefully, because what you're trying to say is, when somebody comes to you, and this would require us perhaps changing some of the language, you're getting your use permit, it does not necessarily run with the property. And that's where we would have to-
Right.
We would have to change some of our structures to do that, and you would be looking at a broader, so I mean, I, I think it's doable. I will also agree with the town attorney's comments. Every, every inclusion, you go a little step farther, there's somebody else that's potentially going to challenge that. And we'd have to make sure that our mechanisms and our basis for doing so are well-understood.
There's, and also there is one area with ABC that would bear more investigation, that occasionally they require us to issue what they call a letter of public convenience or necessity. And it has to do with the concentration or over-concentration of liquor licenses within a geographic area. Those are, those letters are generally associated with, when they have a full bar, with hard liquor, as opposed to beer and wine.
Another illustration on that is some communities have used those also to help control perhaps the oversaturation of convenience stores and gas stations that may sell beer and wine alcohol in a particular area. Again, a slightly different nuance, but something that certainly we would have the ability to use as a tool, should there be issues associated with whatever you choose to do on this approach.
Any more questions to staff? Thanks, Mayor.
I'm sure there will be many questions to staff.
Yes.
But just to follow Councilmember Chilton's legal direction here, it's within our purview to regulate a use, clearly.
Yes.
Is it our purview to narrowly define, basically, what is a tasting room? One of the challenges we have right now is, I'm looking at these lists in the staff report of tasting rooms, and we include Napa style, because they serve wine as an element of their retail experience. So I think we're going to have a challenge even to define tasting room or retail establishment that provides wine tasting.
Well, and that is-
Which would include restaurants.
And again, I think that Bob's suggestion that there needs to be a full vetting of the ABC regulations, and to understand the paradigm under which they grant licenses to wineries to have off-site tasting, because that's very limited for the wine grower. And so, as long as what we're proposing is consistent with what the wine grower is going to expect under ABC regulations, then I, I think that you could go in that direction. But, you know, again, it has to, it gets into that area of, you know, what is just a general liquor license- a general liquor license? What is the ABC's permission to have off-site tasting for a wine grower that has its bonded facilities that are a winery? And whether these joint tasting rooms fall into your definition or not and if it's with a restaurant? I mean, it is, I think, a fairly complicated...
Can I ask a question of Vice Mayor Dunbar? Are you thinking that because they're serving wine with their sandwiches or...
No.
Okay.
They have, they used a Napa Style example, they have a...
Wine tasting bar.
Right.
And what I would say is when we actually lead to definitions, you're not going to have one definition. This will cause us to actually write several definitions. So, what you would create is what is your definition of a standalone tasting room? What is your definition of a mixed-use tasting room with additional retail? We'd have to, what is a restaurant? You know, what is a wines retail? I mean, we'd end up creating five or six definitions, but in that process would allow us to better understand what you're permitting. So, that's what I would envision.
I think five or six is optimistic, to be honest with you, because you're also going to start triggering the food prep onsite that's been an issue for us here, that there's no food prep, but there might be, there is a limited special event use, and so it gets even more complicated in that way.
Correct. But we would start, I think, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Dunbar, you're hitting on part of the elements where we start trying to define what some of these things are and when they overlap or, you know, maybe, for example, it could be the council's discussion is that single-purpose tasting rooms that are very small in space, you know, aren't eligible for special permit consideration, et cetera. I mean, it starts letting you have more flexibility in what your consideration is once we have better understood definitions. And for example, if you define a restaurant with a full liquor license, then you kind of answered what that question is and you kind of go through the ABC rules and we start focusing on some of those. So, I think you're right. Our definition section needs to be a little more comprehensive and then the rest will follow.
If I could just follow up with one more legal question. If we are saying, just picking a number of, whatever we define the wine tasting room and then the next person, the next application comes in and says, I would like to have a wine tasting facility, you have already granted that use in whatever the zoning that that applicant would be in. Are we exposing ourselves to a legal challenge because of a precedent that's already set? Or are we absolutely allowed to change that precedent at any time and restrict it in the future?
If you're talking about changing the precedent, do you mean by changing the ordinance to say that you're going to have a cap on the number of permits for that use or...
Well, two different things. One, if we can pick a number, which would be arbitrary, in my opinion, no matter what the number is. And the other issue is if a zoning classification already has a use, whether it's wine tasting or anything else, can we restrict that same use for future applications?
If you revise the ordinance to indicate for that zone, I mean, I think you'd have to go back to picking, and you, of course, would want to avoid anything that would appear arbitrary. What you would want to do is have some kind of information that supports that it's in the interests of the public's health, safety and welfare, that, you know, Yountville not have every business be a wine tasting business because we don't want people driving up and down the streets, having the tasting wine at every business that we allow to operate here. You know, I mean, there are ways to support that, but of course, the less support you have and the more arbitrary it seems, the more likely it will be that you will have legal challenges to limits on people's uses, especially retail uses that may not have a valid relationship to what is a locally imposed ordinance on, one, alcoholic beverages, to locally, the idea of a local regulation on retail products that have some geographic base, for example. I mean, I know that the county has regulations related to wineries that say grapes have to be 75% local grapes. Well, when you think about what it takes to ship wine, grapes in and out of the county, there may be some justification for that. But if you look at retail sales, that would be the same as saying in a retail store, you can only sell cheese that comes from Napa cows or, you know. So, the farther you get away from something that really is a valid exercise of the police power to protect the community, the more chance you'll have that, one, it seems arbitrary and, two, that it will be challenged.
Now, in the, another example is the balloon launches at Washington Square were assigned to those balloon companies and anyone else, they couldn't just say, transfer someone else in. They were specific to those companies because the council wanted to control the number of balloons, the size of the balloons and who was doing it. So, in the same way, the wineries that come in, we name them in the staff report of who they are and we can, in a same way, limit them to the wineries that are approved at the time the use permit is granted, I would think.
Right. And that's along with that idea that was mentioned by Lewis, that you wouldn't want to make it a transferable commodity necessarily. And it, and it could be supported by findings that it isn't in the public interest to have this be a traded commodity that has increasing value in the town of Yountville.
I'm not sure I understood your explanation about like locally grown only, like if it would be allowed to require any tasting facility to be serving only locally produced product.
I think that you're, you're getting closer to crossing a line that isn't within your purview when you get into that area. I haven't examined it fully yet because it's only come up recently that that might be a possibility. And that has to do with, for example, in retail sales, a restraint on trade or because, you know, the way wineries are licensed to have a tasting room, you know, their ABC license may not be for a winery that produces grapes, that produces wine from local grapes. And so, there could be issues with that. I'm not saying it's completely insurmountable hurdle, but it's just something to consider as we go forward with any kind of regulation.
And probably, Vice Mayor Dunbar, something like that, you would want to indicate your intent, sustainable mileage, and therefore you want a certain percentage that are locally grown, not a must be or only, because those are the types of things that potentially will trip us up with something else. Because a lot of product lines that we consider local here also have, they're not 100% Napa. So, I mean, we need to follow what our own industry does here, which would indicate probably some level of, but not a, not an exclusive, or some of our own folks wouldn't make our own definition.
You have a question? Councilmember Chilton?
No. I want to follow up on...
Oh, follow up?
Okay. So, I think it's, I think it's easy to, and this is where regulation usually falls short, to try to conceive of every situation, which I think we're talking about. My concern and why I think this should be discussed, I'm glad this is being discussed, is my real concern focuses around tasting rooms that are simply tasting rooms. All the other iterations that happen, what I would like to see is for us to go and say, you know what? If we look at single-use businesses, that their entire revenue comes from the sale of wine or from tastings, I think that's, to me, is the item that I would like to address. All the other iterations get much more complicated. Unfortunately, ABC does make it complicated for people. I think there's a reason there aren't wine tasting bars here in town because it's, you know, there's some pretty big hurdles out there. And if we could narrow that down and say, you know what, we're not going to proliferate into a whole bunch of just single-use wine tasting rooms, that leaves open the concept and maybe a single use is defined as, you know, more than 75% of your revenues come from wine tasting or wine sales. That then encourages other structures. I think Napa Style with its structure is positive. It adds the fabric of the retail of town. I think the way Hill Family Estate has worked, I think that adds the fabric of town. I think the way Maison Rie has come in, that adds the fabric of town. I really do share the concern that if we have 10 more standalone tasting rooms, that that does, that gobbles up our very limited retail space and that's not good for the retail mix. So, if we keep it within that narrow confines, almost forget about everything else, we'll be encouraging everything else by default. Right now, we encourage both.
Okay.
We almost discourage retail.
If I can ask, and I think we're in a casual dialogue tonight, I think, right?
Yeah.
Mayor, on this issue?
Eventually, eventually, we'll all be in it.
Yes, thank you.
We can get some public comment before we get...
Yeah.
I was going to say, are we asking questions or are we...
I'm just addressing what Lewis was just saying right now about the single use. And it gets back to a question that's come up in early conversations, is why tasting rooms? Why are, why is the request to limit single-use retail to be just to tasting rooms? What about all the other single-use retail businesses we have in town? If you're a bar and that's all you are, if you're a barber shop and that's all you are, if you're a, if you're a auto repair shop and that's all you are, is it because there are more of those already, more tasting rooms than any of those? What about restaurants? Do we want to restrict restaurants because they just serve food and wine? I mean, I guess I'm still not totally clear on why tasting rooms specifically.
I would say even from, from the first time I got in the council, we had four, maybe four tasting rooms, and now we can add up to maybe nine. So, I think, to me, it's, it is the specific item of there is clear pressure, there's requests, when, when the property comes up at the corner of Mulberry and Washington, what is everybody trying to get in there? They're all trying to get in a wine tasting room. And fortunately, I think the space is too big for just that use alone in some cases. But I think that gobbles up. If suddenly we had, you know, 15 hairstylists and became the hairstylist capital of America, I mean, I think that would, that would be negative. We have limited restaurants by zoning in many areas, including like the Sorento Project, can't put it in a restaurant generally. So, those have been limited. Do I think we need to limit the number of them? Maybe not, but then I think we're kind of out of space on that. So, I see this as, I even look down the line and say, okay, the second floor via Marketplace, this is totally hypothetical and making this up. What if they decided, it's really tough for people to walk upstairs, but if we had this big collective of tasting rooms and there's nowhere else in Napa County, you know, we'd have this sudden explosion, right? I could just, I don't want to pick and choose where it's going to go, but I just think the number of single use, I think we can draw more other retail if we say, if you want to have a tasting room, that's great, but bring something else to this town besides just wine. Because we've got a lot of that around here. That's, that's my rationale for it.
I think I know where you're going, Lewis, and I appreciate it. Standalone tasting rooms or wine tasting and wine retail only? I would agree that we need to do something to limit the number of those as, if not put a moratorium on it. Granting permits for standalone tasting rooms? We've got five now. There's standalone wine tasting and wine retail. We got five now. And I appreciate Lewis's concern, I mean, bringing in the mix, but our zoning permits it. Our zoning permits it. So, I mean, we go back to the legal implications, we go all the way back to redevelop, rethinking our zoning ordinances and then we're going to have to modify our zoning ordinances because they allow it here, but they preclude it here and so, and then we have to go into the whole idea of defining it. And defining it is difficult. I mean, I was comfortable with our last workshop where we decided we would address these issues on a case-by-case basis. As far as standalone, my only comment tonight would be as far as standalone wine tasting rooms in town, I would be interested in defining them and limiting them. As far as the rest of these, Hill Family, Hendrix, Napa Style, Maison Rie, Somersden, they're all going to bring a unique quality to town in terms of their retail aspect, the space that they occupy. And our decisions in granting those permits had to do with each individual business and what they would bring to the community, not just the fact that they had wine tasting. So, I mean, that's, I see this as a very simple issue, but, you know, I mean, all these questions here, I mean, I could go through and say, yes, no, yes, maybe, yes, no, to all of them. But I think to create this big...
I hear you, and that's part of what the discussion here was. And I will never apologize for staff asking you too many questions because that's our job when we're trying to get you to help us develop policy. But I think you're hitting to the genesis of what we're talking about. What I think you're really looking at is not a change in your zoning, but what staff would be recommending is that you're adopting policy guidance, which is going to provide for ability for staff to meet with, when an applicant comes in, a landlord, and they want to know what they can do, we'll be able to have something that says, the council has at this point determined that we have a maximum of standalone and that we would encourage X. You know, you need to do retail plus. And that's what you're really, you know, that's what this is all about, is how do we, how do we put something in that the council can adopt and therefore staff can show with potential applicants that are interested in what they're doing? Right now, we don't have anything. So, a lot of applicants want to know what they can do, you know, what's the risk? And when you put more risk in front of somebody, when they don't know it, they've got to do a business plan, that's challenging and they'd rather know what, what the game is.
I mean, I think if you're talking about an absolute cap, you're going to have to, you're going to have to amend the zoning ordinance. You're not going to be able to just have a policy that you share with prospective entrepreneurs that, well, you know, I know this is what our zoning ordinance says, but by the way, if you come to council, they're going to say no because this is their policy because we already have 10. On the other hand, I think that you, short of that, you could have a policy that as a council, you encourage, you know, if your, if your intention is to use your ABC off-site tasting license to operate here, that when you do that, you know, we do have to consider the best interests of the community and when we consider it, we will consider it favorably if there's a mix of uses that eliminates the possibility this will be a standalone tasting room for the retail sales of your wine. Now, will that be as effective as a cap? It probably won't be. Will you be in the same position you are now, considering things on a case-by-case basis? You will be. But you may also find that you could draft the policy with enough teeth that you feel comfortable relying on it on a case-by-case basis to say that, in the exercise of our police power here in this case, we don't see that it is in the best interests of the community to have this next incremental incursion into the single-use tasting room area.
But we, is there any, if we decide to put a moratorium on single-use wine tasting rooms, do we need a sunset clause with that? Or would that be, you know, at least one step before, you know, redoing the zoning, figuring out all the other issues? You just put a moratorium on and then maybe say, you know, someplace closer to our general plan update, we can review that?
You could have an urgency ordinance. Those generally only last 45 days and then you have to prepare a report that explains how you're addressing the issue and then decide whether you're going to go forward with an ordinance actually amending the zoning ordinance and/or general plan to address the issue that the urgency ordinance, which would essentially be a moratorium.
So, we can't pass a resolution for a moratorium?
No.
And I think, just a legal clarification, what you're really talking about, Councilmember Moller and your vernacular, is actually a cap. And if we want to set a cap, we got to write that and find the findings to support that. I do think what the town attorney is talking about, and again, that's where I'm going back to the policy guidance. If we know what you want, and what I'm hearing is you want retail diversity in addition, the certificate of necessity, it's a very powerful tool that the council has in its discretion. And we can come up with findings and various things. And if the council wants to say, you know, at this point in time, we have X, you know, we have limited retail, we can go through a variety and therefore we find it in our best interest to promote, maintain retail shopping space, encourage, develop, all those types of things, we can work towards that. You know, and then you can look at rezoning, but we're going to get to that with the general plan update. So, the real question is, what would you like to put in place to help us in the year to two that we're going to, before we get there?
Well, I mean, I'm no, I think I'm totally on board with, you know, wine tasting and retail. I mean, if you, if you look at the examples we have, Hill Family, I think, kind of came into being because there was an antique store there and these, you know, when they, when they came in to do that, they really wanted to do wine, but they liked the idea of the antique store there, so they were willing to kind of, you know, accommodate that. Maison Rie, I think he really had, you know, a major goal for art there. So, I think we really have to deal...
So I think we really have to deal with too, if somebody else is coming in. Are they just going to kind of cobble together some retail so they're going to pass that? And that's going to be really hard because more than likely, you know, with, that's going to probably be their intent. They need that, you know, wine tasting room there and it's like, okay, what do I have to do to kind of slip under the door here? I mean, they're probably, I mean, unless their wife's really into, you know, doing something unique or, you know, the husband has some of their side trade. That would really meld well together. I think we're going to get a lot of that and we're going to be struggling with that.
Well, and I would also suggest that part of our policy, when you put together, there has to be some. Menu that again, I think one of you all said that we can't preordain everything and we can't write something. Here the case would be if the council's intent is to maintain diverse retail experience and have there be something. We can create some stuff and then my suggestion would be let staff work up some menu options because. For example, it may not always be gross square footage devoted to some other thing other than wine. It may not be the 75% of sales, but we could put a menu together that says. They will need to show evidence of a significant retail component by meeting one of the following. And we write down three or four ideas so that we don't end up with everybody. One of my favorite stories is the guy with the rug store and he literally has one rug and when he sells the rug. And I mean, that's what you don't want to do is have somebody bring in one other thing that's not serious or significant. And have that be our retail component. Staff shares that same concern, but we aren't quite sure that there's a simple way to define that. So we think we may have to come up with a, a menu structure that gives you some flexibility that way. But it needs to probably be incorporated into your policy if that's what you want to do.
You know, to some extent, we've got 10 places where you can have wine tasting. I mean, maybe we can just have discussion, is that enough? I mean, are, are we there yet? Because.
I think coun- council's already said that we can't. Put a number on the number of tasting facilities.
We could.
No, we can't.
Unless you can justify that number. I don't see how you can justify saying if we have 10 already, that's too many or that's enough.
That's the number, putting a number saying that we have 10 already and that's enough, that's arbitrary.
To be hon- as far as I'm concerned, we haven't even defined the tasting room yet. I mean, we have, we have two. Wine tasting with wine retail. Is that the same as a tasting room only? Because all they have in there is wine.
Yes.
You either have it to buy by the bottle or you taste it by the glass and then by the bottle. How is that different than a tasting room only?
It's the, these are the same.
Yeah, no.
But then how do you get, you know, there is council opposition to the Sorrento building that has local artists. Presenting their artwork in addition to wine tasting. That sounds like mixed retail.
There wasn't a majority.
That, that is mixed retail.
I understand, but. To me, that was mixed retail. But there was opposition to that. Because it was a wine tasting facility. So is there a percentage of that secondary retail that's going to be required? I don't know.
Well, I mean, I, I, I think that. You know, having a number is not always totally arbitrary. I mean, you could take the number of places where you can go and get, you know, a sample of wine now and to divide it by the population. There's going to be some number that's going like, well, that's just too much. And that's going to be pretty reasonable. I mean, you can do it that way. You can do it by, you know, people who are just drinking age. I mean, there, there, there are some ways that you can take that number. I mean, we might not, I'm not saying we have to cap it at 10, but you can take 10, you know, and do some. You know, iterations on, okay, well, does that sound like too many? And yeah, you know, when you've got 10 tasting rooms for, or one tasting room for every 50 people. I don't think it would take much to say, I think you got too much, so.
Depends on one's drinking habits.
Yeah, then that's what makes us all laugh, but you know, really.
But truly, but that's also why people come to this valley. They don't come here for our car sales. And are we kidding ourselves to regulate the reason people come to the Napa Valley and the Yountville specifically? If we said, we don't want any more restaurants in town or we'd like to start phasing them out, I think we'd have a real problem too. Because I think, you know, wine, food are two of our biggest commodities. And so to, it still feels arbitrary to be calling out the, the wine tasting experience as needing restriction. I'm certainly still open to the conversation as to how to, how to soften its impact on the community. Because to me, it's, it's an affordable affordability conversation. Not just wine consumption, it's affordability and how does it fit into the local community? The, the resident community, not the visitor community. And so I think that's kind of the direction we should go as opposed to trying to. Put a number on how many retail spaces there are.
Well, and my, my, this, this goes back to the, the real reason that, that I going into this. Really want to personally want to propose or put forward the idea of narrowly defining in terms of policy. Like the mayor said, wine tasting rooms, wine sales only. The other ones personally, I'm okay, I, because I agree with you. I don't think we should cap the number of. Businesses that have wine tasting as a, as a component. I don't think we can get agreement on that. And therefore I think it would at least be a step in a positive direction to say, you know what? We do want to encourage some, some diversity in town. We don't want standalone tasting rooms to take over. And there, you know, things are inching its way in there. We can have a discussion as a council if, if, if it comes up to say, is this really re- mixed retail or are you making this up? That's why I would put in that number of, you know, I think that. The reason I come up with a percentage of sales is a lot of liquor licenses for restaurants are based on percentage of sales. And if you want to have a bar license, you can get a bar license, but if a restaurant license, you have to have like two thirds of your sales come from food. And that keeps people from basically, you know, serving french fries and then just being a bar and going crazy. And that's why I would say, you know what, 20% of your sales come from something else. We can all decide whether that something else makes sense, but at least it gives direction to say, don't come here and just say, I'm going to put up one rug. And if it never sells, that's fine. And what they always do with, you know, ABC. What does is, is they have a reasonable reason to think. People go in there and somebody files a complaint and says, I never see anything getting sold in here because you guys check on that. That's part of the approval process that we, you have to provide this kind of information. All the other questions get so complicated that I don't, I'd agree, I don't think we can have agreement on that. What Bill thinks over there.
Agree to disagree?
Yeah.
Councilmember Dutton, did you have any thoughts on this matter?
Yes, I do. I think probably I'll, I'll go first, right? With Councilmember Shilton said, I'm afraid I'm on the opposite end of that one. Because I understand the sales thing. One, I think you have a problem with the monitoring of it. One, for instance. The Blackbird, or wherever he is.
Tyson Ray.
You know, that type of, I mean, he could sell one piece of art there, maybe it's $150,000. And that could be half of his sales. So I think you give a real problem there. You could have one guy that would have a little corner of his shop and he might do the 20%. Nobody even realizes he's nothing but a wine tasting room. So I favor personally on that issue, the square footage for, one, you force the individual, you know, to think about it. Two, when he's paying the rents that they're going to pay here, he's really going to think about it, you know, of what he does to that space. And three, we've talked about this quite a bit, but. By capping them, anytime you start capping them, all of a sudden the last guy in, think that's it? I don't have to do anything more. The guys before me, I don't have to worry about any more competition. I personally feel, especially in the aspect of the other than the wine tasting. That it would encourage more people to be a little different. And I think Councilperson Moller said slide under the door. I know there's a, I don't think people would do that. I mean, the only reason they do that if we allow them to do that. Because if we do it on a case by case basis, we can eliminate that type of thing. The other aspect is if you start saying, no, this is all we want. Think about it, if you were a landlord and you have an empty space and all of a sudden they've said, hey, by the way. You can't have those four guys that want that space. You have to wait till another baby store that's going to come in there, that's going to go out of business in three weeks or something like that. I think that's really discriminatory towards a landlord or somebody that's building their own operation. A point came up and I think we all missed it. When we did the Sorrento, I think you all caught it, but it was very evident that the winemaker was brought in that day. He had no clue what was going on. He mentioned people can get a glass of wine and he just about lost himself right there. I think we all agreed that no, we're not going to have a place where you can go in and get a glass of wine. That's for the restaurants and these type of things. So my personal opinion is they should be wine tasting, the one ounce, the pours. I don't drink wines, but I don't know what they are. But anyway, it's very limited. It's not a gulping place, so to speak. And that they should have some kind of a retail component attached to it. I feel based on square footage. And then it becomes to me on a case by case basis. In other words, when we come to them, I, you know, I think we're all in the, the same venue here about what, but what could, and you know when it's not right or when it. And to this point, I think we have to re, I think everything that's come here has been pretty high end. I, I wouldn't anticipate somebody would come in there with a piece of junk and I don't see how they could based on their investment. We talked about, and I didn't ask you Kenny. My guess is you have not had one special permit for either minor or major event at a wine shop.
Yeah, I, well, I've, I've had Hill Family Wine incident, their special events when they have a group. So I think what he got, seven, two or three?
Yeah, we had a couple.
You didn't mention it in your report that you never approved any of those, that's why. I'm not being derogatory, I just thought, okay, but. Okay, I mean, potentially when we're talking, we have 10, you could have 240. You've had three. You know, so I mean. I, I know it's something in there, so it hasn't been issued. So I, I personally don't think, I think they police themselves. We haven't any, any problems in town, you know, that are related to, as I know from a wine tasting shop. So while I appreciate the discussion, I think a lot of this can just be common sense and a case by case basis and go from there. Do I feel?
Bill, they are listed in a total, I didn't, I didn't pull them out.
Thank you.
If I may, one of the problems I have with the very last thing Councilmember Dutton was saying goes back to what. Guidance we were getting from, from the town manager, wanting to be able to explain to a. An applicant what you can and cannot consider. And if we leave it totally up to a case by case basis without any parameters. Then we're asking every future applicant to go to some level of expense, time, effort, town staff time and effort. To then come up here and say, no, we never really wanted that kind of a use anyway. And if it isn't stated in some capacity. Then it's not, I don't think it's fair. How to write that is very challenging.
Will be a challenge. Amy?
I think that what will help staff and the council is if before you try to determine whether the standard will be adopted in regulations by amending the zoning ordinance. Or it will be in some policy you adopt, that what will make it supportable is that you decide what the goal of. And advise staff what the goal of the limit is. Because if it's to encourage diversity of retail uses. One, that makes the goal more clear to the applicant. And two, you may decide that you may not reach that goal by imposing this limit. Because if they can't do a wine tasting room, they're not going to do anything because it's not economically feasible. I mean, so I think that, or if the goal is, we just don't want to encourage wine drinking because too many. You know, I mean, I think that that would be very helpful is to first determine what is the goal in having a limit on. Either the single tasting rooms or something broader than that.
Well, there, in the conversations I've had with members of the community, some in the industry, some just plain old Yountville residents. One of the issues that comes up is affordability. It's not the wine consumption aspect itself. It's the lack of affordability of that consumption so that it kind of is not really available to the average resident. That's one component. Another component is what you just said. They feel like there's too much consumption of alcohol in the wine. We have it in the restaurants, we have it in the tasting rooms. And now we have a bunch of people that have been drinking that are either walking or driving or riding bikes around town. And that's an element that they are concerned with. The mix of retail is another one. They like something non-wine related. And that's where I usually get hung up in my conversation is well, what? Non-wine related retail would you propose? I don't know. And then you get into, how do you support that retail use that the market isn't asking for? The market is clearly asking for wine tasting. They've clearly asked for. Fine dining and we have gone those directions, I think with great success. So to artificially. Put some of these elements in place, I think is going to be really challenging and potentially damaging. To our local economy, to be honest with you.
But I, I think that they're not only challenging, but I think they're unnecessary at this point. Because right now, an applicant has no guidance whatsoever. So to simply give the guidance of, we want you to come in, I'll use Councilmember Dutton's example. Cause I'm, I support that. You come in, if you want to do a wine tasting room. That's allowed in our zoning ordinances. The council has determined through its policies that you need to bring forth a multi-use retail. A third of the square footage needs to have a, a retail use to it. I agree, there's no way that we can really determine that we, you know, we want, want to have a barber shop and want to be in our gallery and want to be, you know, antiques. And if, if Hill came out and said, you know what, the antique business has really dried up because there used to be a lot of antiques in town. And now we want to switch it to X. Then I, I can't tell them what the right business is to put in there. And yeah, we might end up with 30 bookstores of aerial shots of Napa Valley, but we're going to end up there right now anyway. So at least we, we have that parameter. I think the square footage thing, idea totally makes sense to me. At least you can walk in and go, hmm, I don't see anything in here, right? Or I see one rug. I think something gives a little more direction that when an applicant comes forward, like Sorrento, they would have out of the box said, you know what? Let's propose a mixed use retail for the tasting room. We're going to make sure we find something ahead of time that, that makes sense with that. And at least we give in some direction.
But I also want to echo what the town attorney said. If the goal here is to encourage, maintain and increase retail diversity, that's how you write your policy statement. And that makes it much easier to write guidance that says. Tasting room plus something. And then we can put, we can try to work on that menu of ideas for you, whether it's a third square footage or some other component. I mean, if that's what your interests are, we can write a very narrow, I'm even going to surmise to say that we might even be able to get it on one page.
Well, Amy said my mind very well, which is, my goal would be to, the whole purpose of this to me is to encourage diversity of retail. I don't think we should say wine tasting, like you said, to landlords. Sorry, you can't bring any wine in here, even though everybody's knocking on your door and you've got all this money. Makes no sense to me. But it's, I, I think we are unable to take the next step and predetermine what the variety of retail should be. But by simply saying it's not just wine tasting only, then they're going to bring something else to the table. And maybe if they see it says diversity of retail and they look around and say, there's 15 antique shops with, they're going to know, hey, that's, may not be the best thing to bring.
I, I think if, if you tell us that you would like us to bring back a draft policy. Focusing on your interest in a diverse retail, maintaining, increasing. We can work on some things for you to put back in a draft. It may then require another meeting after that, but I think we can get you something that will keep the dialogue going. That addresses where you're at and still serve that meaningful tool to let people know. We're not saying no, but we're really saying this is the council wants to see this. And I think that will be helpful.
I, I'd like to add, and I agree with what you said, but I think there's a lot of ingenuity out there. And I think we're going to see stuff coming, that's my God, I didn't see that coming, as the old saying goes. So I would encourage that and like you say, when you're, Bob's talking to him, you know, we already have. Eight of these, you might think of something different because I don't know how well that's going to go over him. You know what I mean, type of thing. So I, I'm fully convinced that if somebody wants that room bad enough and they know they have to divert the, you know, devote that space to it. They're going to think pretty darn hard about what they're going to put in there and, and try to be a little unique compared to somebody else. And it's competition, they want the fellow in there versus going to a down the street or what have you.
But I would.
I was going to say, and speaking of ingenuity, we do have some folks in the audience that might want to share with us some of their ideas on, on this issue.
I would love to hear public comment.
Well, what I'd like to just follow up with first is this is a, and I totally get the mixed use. I think we all pretty much agree that mixed use, if we are going to allow wine tasting rooms, that the mixed use. Condition is really a step. I think it's just the very first fundamental step because we still have many issues like. I, I think I mentioned earlier, food preparation. What other types of activity is going to be allowed, are going to be allowed on that site? And if you have, like the case we just dealt with, multiple buildings on one parcel. How do they have, do they need to? multiple buildings on one parcel, how do they have... Do they need to coexist? Should they complement? Do they not have to complement? I remember in previous discussions with industry reps, the hours of operation, they actually were fine with them not matching up, because they felt like there was a, you know, "You run your business like you want, and I'll run my business like I want." But I think we need to collectively decide on some of the restrictions, and then not require every use be identical. I think sterilizing it like that is not appropriate. But I just think that there are many more conversations once we decide whether any more tasting rooms are going to be allowed, to think we're saying that, yes. There's a lot more detail to be worked out about how that retail business can operate. Because it's still a little bit of uncertainty about what you can do within the parameter of a tasting room.
Yeah. Can we do that in the next session?
I don't propose we do that tonight, or come up with all the answers tonight.
Good. Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this matter this evening? Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm Bill Crowe with Scott Harvey Wines. I'm a shareholder, employee, and nephew of Scott Harvey. And we are currently in the process of putting together the permits and obtaining a lease for the property on sixty-five oh five Washington. And it sounds pretty good from what you guys are saying today. We're currently talking, or with somebody who owns a women's clothing store, and pairing with them. So, there'd be women's clothing buying by the women on one side, and maybe the guys would have somewhere to hang out while that's happening. And, you know, also, women's clothing attracts women, who also like wine. So, that's what we're looking at right now. And I just wanted to introduce myself, and let you all know that we're here, and that we are currently one of those wineries looking for a mixed-use permit.
Thank you. Anyone else? I like your suggestion, Mr. Harvey. Bring some shoes. Yeah, shoes. Give us a glass of wine, we'll buy anything.
A taste, that's a one-ounce taste.
Just to get the record, we've got that understood.
You know, seriously, what the gentleman just said makes a lot of sense.
Well, no, I know it does, Bill. I've got it written down here in my notes. Wine and ladies' clothing.
Sixty-five oh five Washington Street.
But I mean, because, again, somebody would say, "Gee, I can't afford that old building, and maybe a third, but I can handle it," so...
So, the one thing that's a little...
Men's clothes coming.
The one thing that's a little different is, we wouldn't have the women's clothing. We'd be in partnership with the business in that space. So, that's a little different than what I've been hearing tonight.
Yeah, I understand.
But it was... It's definitely done on a, you know, fifty-fifty, sixty-forty.
I think there's a shop in St. Helena who does something similar. It's a nice concept.
Yeah.
Given the hour, we need to have you make a motion to extend a little bit. The last hour went quickly, or at least by my calculation, it did. And then I need you to give us a little wrap-up. It sounds to me like I'm hearing a consensus on the council for support of some type of a policy to support retail diversity, and then staff can take a stab at trying to incorporate some stuff. And I will say, it's a take a stab, and it will have draft written all over it, so that we can try to incorporate in a very simple way some of the discussion points that you've had.
Good. Well, so I have one question there. So, if somebody comes in and just wants a standalone wine, is this what we're going to prepare is going to send the message kind of go away? That's not what we want, right?
What I would say is, and actually, the town attorney and I were just talking, one of the policy statements may be something simple like, standalone wine rooms are not encouraged. And you notice I chose my words very carefully. Not prohibited, but what it does is then it will give you an opportunity, when you come back up, to say, you know, "This application isn't consistent with the town's policy. We don't find a reason to support an ABC certificate of necessity for the sale of a standalone. Doesn't meet the town's goals of retail diversity." So, while it's not a strict prohibition, I think it will send that message, yes.
Motion to extend meeting. Second?
All in favor? Aye. Post? No, thank you. Okay. Staff has sufficient direction on that item?
I think we...
You're going to draft a policy, bring it back to us, we'll have another meeting.
Right. I think that's what we have. I think we have some ideas, yes.
Okay, good. Future work session dates. Do we need to whip out our calendars?
Well, briefly, yes. What we're looking at is, one, it looks like... One, I'm going to be having our new finance director, Kathleen Bradbury, we're getting back with you. We're looking at trying to set up some May workshop dates for the budget. You know, and I think last year, we used two half-day workshops, plus a couple of our regular... So, what I'd rather do tonight is have Kathleen work, and then she'll be sending you emails, and we'll try to see if there's some dates that work for you.
You don't want to set those now?
Unless you're prepared.
Is everybody prepared to pick a date?
I've got my calendar.
All right. And I'll turn the mic over to Kathleen.
Kathleen, do you have some dates in mind? You're the one that's going to need the time to prepare this.
Yeah, I know. Well, if we're looking at Thursdays in May, we could propose the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth? Flotter Shad Symposium, all day, twenty-first.
On the twenty-first, we have a community center meeting.
About the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth? Is the fourteenth too soon?
Fourteenth could work. Fourteenth is totally open.
What is it we're proposing? Half-days, full-days?
Half-days.
Morning or afternoons?
I believe, based on previous afternoons with the council's preference, probably starting at one.
Yes.
Fourteenth and the twenty-eighth?
Those dates won't work, of course, but we're going to set those.
Yeah, they'll work.
Half-day afternoons?
Yeah.
Starting at one to five?
One to five.
Fourteenth and twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Right. Of May, Thursdays.
May, and then if we need something, it'll follow into June, but we'll have a...
ARG presentation, seismic retrofit, space needs analysis?
Well, I was going to... We think this is going to need to take about thirty to forty-five minutes for the council, because it's a full, you know, presentation on the space needs study and the concepts. So, the option for you is whether you would like a standalone meeting, or whether you would like to incorporate it into a regular council meeting. And if that's the case, it looks like a item that was going to go forward on April seventh is no longer ready. So, my suggestion would be that I try to schedule that for April seventh, if possible.
It's not going to be ready, April seventh?
No, this one will be. There was another item. I was trying not to overload your council meeting.
Concepts take two hours. That's your window. So...
All right. We will look at... I will look at trying to get them here on April seventh.
What's wrong with the twenty-first? Is that... Would that be better?
Right now, your calendar for activity is better on the seventh than it is the twenty-first. That's for not overloading your agenda.
And we have a bit of a sense of urgency in this repairing of this building, correct?
It's been here for eighty years. I think it's been...
Well, except...
Two more weeks.
My comment on that is, we, you know, we are in a... We are non-compliant.
No, I'm speaking specifically of what's in the walls, not just the walls themselves.
Correct.
And the near fire that...
No, I appreciate it. I'd almost forgotten what Vice Mayor Dunbar is referring to, which is, we had a near fire with... Last week, with the actual burning of the outdated electrical that was overtaxed next to Bobby O'Tirrenan's office, if I can tonight, in our... So, there is some inadequacy in the building. And the approach that we're using is to finish the concept, introduce the basis, and look at three concepts. And then, the original approach that the council had was that we would do final design in the next fiscal year, with construction being potentially two to three years out. So, that will be a budget consideration for us, as well as what we're doing. But yes, I do think, moving forward with an understanding of how to best utilize this building in a safe, appropriate, and efficient manner for both the employees and the public, has to continue to be a high priority.
And we're still on April seventh, then, right?
At this point in time.
Okay, good. Non-profit grant funding applications?
The town clerk had indicated that what she would like to do, I guess there's two decisions. One, does the council still want to continue funding nonprofit grants? And if your decision's no, then the town clerk would simply send letters telling everybody there's no grant funding this year. So, I do want to put that in front of you as an option. Secondly, would be, if you choose to continue your grant funding, she needs to back up. And we were looking at having the hearings for their presentations be the first meeting in June, and therefore, she would need to send out everybody so their applications were submitted prior to that.
I'd like to take a look at the budget, and just consider all of our options. Keeping that on the plate, taking that off. So, I'd like to go through budget discussions before I made a yea or nay decision.
Well, my only...
There's a timing with accepting application. There's a timing process we put in place. We either put it on hold this year for budget considerations, or we move forward, because there's a process of mailing out letters and notifications.
I'd rather err on the side of putting it on hold. That's my opinion.
We're not obligated to grant any money, even if we allow the applications to be...
And I should point out that you cannot take action tonight to say there's no grant program, because that's not agendized on the agenda.
Right, exactly.
But that... I'm just trying to explain to you that, so you understand why staff is asking some of the questions, is, you know, if we're going to communicate, we need to do that. So, perhaps we will agendize that, if that's your concurrence, for the next meeting, to get feedback on how you want to approach that. Because if you do not want to proceed with grants, or else, if we want to evaluate it, we need to write and change our letter a little bit to indicate that, while they may write their application, we may reserve the right not to fund anything. So, just...
Did we budget for grants this year, this fiscal year, or for next fiscal year?
You've only budget... You budget one year at a time.
Yeah. Well, I mean, did we budget for grants, to accept grant applications, this year?
In your current year, yes. Your funding for fiscal year...
Awarded your funding, and it runs through June third.
For this fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. So, we don't have any placeholder in the budget for grants for next year?
That's correct.
Okay.
Standard has been twenty K, but you've not awarded up to that maximum.
Well, I think what the vice mayor and Councilmember Mollers said were actually the same thing, which is, we go through the budget cycle. I think we should do the interviews. We should schedule them. And if we get to that point, I think we should say, "It's tough times, and we're going to look at it, but we would like you to apply, and we're going to determine whether we're going to make applications." They're not ever guaranteed in the first place.
We may not have the amounts that we've had in the past.
Do that, and then what we'll do is, we will send out the stuff, and we will make sure there's probably a bolded copy out.
So, on June second, we'll hear grant application interviews?
First meeting in June.
Is there something that can be done this year that makes sure everybody in the world who's never applied before doesn't apply?
Budget adoption is typically, what, the second meeting in June?
Second meeting in June, and if...
Last year was a little different. We did grant funding on June third. Then we had, six seventeen, we had some discussion about grant funding, like a little workshop. And then we came back and had an actual special meeting on the twenty-fourth. So, it was sort of three-pronged.
I think that was my fault, because of scheduling. And this year, I may even have a conflict, so that I have to recuse myself from the grant process if...
Good. Okay. Item twelve, consider LAFCO local agency formation. Are we finished with the...
No. Are we supposed to write down a date?
You said June.
For what?
I don't know. I'm confused.
No, they were just approximating when we were going to be addressing budget.
We would be hearing these things on regular council meetings, at regular council meetings.
It'll be your first meeting in June.
With the exception of the budget workshop sessions. Those were the only ones we had to pin a date down for.
Did we do that?
Yes, you did. Fourteenth and twenty-eighth, noon, one to five.
Got it. So, that's all I need on my calendar.
Of May, yeah.
Yep, one to five of May, and we'll send reminders.
Okay. LAFCO, is anybody interested in serving on LAFCO?
I think somebody should serve on LAFCO, because I don't think that Yountville should pass up the opportunity to be on that. I don't know what's going to affect Yountville necessarily, but we have an Up Valley seat, and it seems odd to me to pass that up. And, I don't know, Napa Pipe's going to come in there, for ever God forsaken soul wants to take that one on. But I think somebody should do it.
It probably won't come up in the two years you're on.
Does anybody know how... What kind of time commitment? How often they meet? Have we... Has anybody gone to the meetings to give any...
No. Calistoga Mayor Jingles has been the Up Valley representative. I was actually going to propose we have him continue that. He's aware of the issues, maybe better than a new person from council here, and I think he's sensitive to our needs.
He represents all Up Valley seats. If someone's interested in taking that seat, we're entitled to it for a two-year term?
No, I get Councilmember Chilton's concern that we may not be fairly represented, given our opportunity. But I also think that Mayor Jingles is very sensitive if any of us have any issues or opinions about... That's just in case none of us have the ability to serve on there.
LAFCO does meet on the fourth Monday every month at the Board of Supervisors Chambers.
What time?
Four P.M.
Sure. I mean, I... Not necessarily suggesting myself, but I'll take it. I just think, I don't think Yountville should pass it up.
I don't either. Okay.
Yeah. We're entitled to the seat, so I...
Jack is going to really do some bad jokes about me.
I will nominate Councilmember Chilton then to be our representative on LAFCO.
I'll second. And at the next City Selection Committee meeting, we... Maybe we want to vote?
Yeah, but finish the vote.
Let's vote on him, too. Yeah. Then we'll select, formalize it. But here, yeah, we can... All in favor? Aye.
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 Post. Pass Bill's bedtime.
Councilmember Chilton can call Mayor Jingles and let him know.
Yeah.
Yeah, at the next City Selection Committee meeting, which is in April?
Yeah. I'll send the recommendation letter to LAFCO, to the county, so they can agendize.
And then we'll formalize it at that meeting. Staff informational reports?
There are none.
Council reports and updates. There was no flood control meeting since the last time we met, and the one today was canceled. So, the next one is on the next council meeting, which would be April seventh. Upper Valley Waste Management?
Yeah, we had a meeting yesterday, as a matter of fact, here. Interesting public comment. First time ever, it was a mother from Hell Mountain School District. She talked about their greenie, Green Gang that they have up there to school, and what they've done for the elementary schools. Quite interesting. And I'm going to follow up a little bit on here locally. You're going to hear a lot of talk about Earth Day, but that's in April twenty-fifth, so be aware of it. Did go to the Allied Council meeting last week. Just a couple of interesting things have popped up, and Councilmember Chilton was there also, but RV park. And it appears that they're going to probably use a little bit of outside sourcing to manage some of their operations. And this is a hidden nugget they have up there, believe me, for a revenue source. They used to rent it out. They haven't recently, but I think they're on the right track there. And also, they're going to get some outside storage units up there. So, I don't know if it's just exclusively for members, but I'm sure if they have excess capacity, they'll probably offer it down in town. And also, please be aware of, April first is going to be the celebration of the Allied Council there. It starts, I believe, at one-thirty in the afternoon. At the chapel is the service, sort of a program they have. And then, after that, they go to Lincoln Theater. I know there's... I'll let Cindy do that. And the last thing, I saw on this Thursday's Transportation Committee meeting, that they're going to talk about the stop sign here for the, I think it's the eighty-eighth time, on moving it from here down to Fennel. I hope that gets done. Mike, are you going to be there?
I'm actually very pleased to report that if you go out and look, you better stop tonight, because the stop sign and the limit signs were installed, and the motoring public will see a caution flag to remind them. For the time being, during the transition period, there will be a stop at Yount and Humboldt, going southbound. And then there will now be, well, there is tonight, you will all be able to experience it, a three-way stop at the intersection of Yount and Fennel.
Forget what I just said.
Sometimes we work very quickly.
I appreciate it. Amazing.
Any other reports and comments?
My only comment was going to be a little bit on what you just said. Crosswalk was installed yesterday, or today? I think it was today, on Mulberry Street, at Heather. And I personally, having driven up there several times today, has its intended effect already. It just makes you really notice that there's going to be people going back and forth. So, thank you.
Good.
I have one other comment. I'd like to maybe try to put on the agenda for some future date after all... I'd like to maybe try to put on the agenda for some future date, after all of our, the major priorities are done, a discussion about maybe how we all collectively, or individually, wanna deal with contacts with proponents or opponents of items that might come up for future public hearings.
Council comfortable with that? Agendizing our policy on contact with...
You mean, with applicants?
Applicants, or any other individuals with issues coming before the council?
Talk about creating a policy? Or just talk about it?
I guess just talking about it.
Yeah, just kinda review.
Well, I think it could be an opportunity, I'm, I am preparing some guidance and some reference material for all of you, that you'll be getting under some separate cover from the town attorney and I, but the town clerk and I have recognized your current council protocol document needs some updating, and if you were to talk about modifying that, including a conversation, and I do wanna make sure when we talk about it, it should be a proponent and opponent both, because appropriate disclosure that the council want should apply both to an applicant and to somebody that may be opposed. Our current policy is a little absent in that area, so that may be an appropriate area for there to get some consideration.
Well, and it should also include any outside conversations with members of the public, where, that draw, that anybody draws a conclusion outside of the public meeting and has a preconceived decision.
Absolutely, and broader, we can discuss ex parte communications, what that means in the council's philosophy. And I think, you know, as it gets done, I've given you all a copy for your drawer of the current council protocols, just so you have them convenient, but I do think this is a document that can use some modernization. And again, the council has the ability to say, what's our, you know, what's our standard for decorum, and how do we wanna approach this? And I do believe that particular area could use a little updating, especially, and maybe we wanna have a discussion that talks more specifically about when you're in your role as a planning commission, you know, provide some guidance to the council in that area. So, I mean, I don't think it's a bad, a bad topic. I, I would request that it perhaps be an after-the-budget topic, if that's okay with your concurrence.
Sir, I don't have a problem with that. Scheduling it when time permits. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. I would just like to remind the citizens of Yountville, if you're still listening, that this weekend is the 16th Annual Taste of Yountville. It starts at 11:00 A.M., goes till 5:00 P.M. There'll be food and wine and entertainment, and, and all kinds of fun activities for kids and the whole family. They will be closing, the permit allows the event coordinator to close Washington Street, I believe, at 8:00 A.M. And so, Washington Street will be closed from Yount to Humb, Humboldt, from 8:00 A.M. till 5:00, or probably 6:00 P.M., for cleanup and setup and cleanup. Seven?
Yeah, I think so, it's seven.
Two hours?
Well, yeah, it's six or seven.
Sure you can. Watch me. So, I just wanna give you a heads up with that one, and so, I hope you'll all be around to enjoy it. It's a fun event, and it's really gonna be very popular this year, and it's gonna be gorgeous and sunny and nice.
Absolutely.
And also, the, like Councilmember Dutton alluded to earlier, April 1st, the California Veterans Home at Yountville is celebrating their 125th anniversary. That's the reason for the celebration, and those festivities will begin in the afternoon at the, is it the Armistice Chapel?
It's a chapel...
Oh, no, it's the, it's the main chapel on, yeah, right on President's Drive there. And, and adjourned to a reception in the Lincoln Theater, and the town is, of course, promoting that event as well. So, we'll be doing a proclamation, and granting a proclamation, and putting some information in the sun. I believe the sun's doing a special eight-page spread on the whole event, so it should be a really nice, a nice event for the community. Vice Mayor, you had something?
I did have two very quick things. I, I mentioned Napa Councilmember Peter Maud. I told him I would mention, there is a fundraiser being held, it turns out, on Earth Day, April 25th, and he and, he's a co-chair with Joe Peatman for the Napa Valley Shelter Project, the homeless shelter. They're having a Texas Hold'em poker tournament down at the Napa Elks Lodge, April 25th, and for information, contact Tracy Wrightout at 255-1646. And then the other thing, just very quickly, I wanted to suggest the council consider in the future, providing citizen recognition awards, and that we can propose certain residents of Yountville that have provided exceptional, either service, or had a major impact on our community, that we recognize those people in a, in a public forum. Certainly, we'll all have our names that we can recommend. I would certainly recommend Chef Keller, Jeff Steen, the Howzleys, the Dulinski's, folks like that, the Duttons, that have been here for many, many years, that go over and above serving the community. So, I think it would be appropriate for the council to recognize those folks in a public forum.
That's a great idea.
So, I'd like to see that agendized sometime in the near future, before or after the budget.
That's a good idea. We, I think we've done that in the past, so we should continue to do that.
Well, I think it's also timely, in particular with the Sunset Magazine ranking that we got, and the French Laundry, I noticed, and the Up Valley Sun is, again, offering their locals, you know, turn back the clock prices, which is something incredibly special, you know, you, you mention that anywhere in the world, and people are pretty amazed that, that we have the opportunity to have a $50 dinner at the French Laundry. And, and he's not alone, but he's certainly a key figure, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ready to adjourn here. Item 15, future addenda items, we'll be discussing the annual fireworks display permit and commercial properties frontage improvement standards. And with that, we have about nine minutes to adjourn to closed session. Thank you, everyone.